Good evening, everyone. We're ready to start the meeting. Marnie, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Steve Friedman.
Here.
Councilmember Deb Gillis.
Here.
Councilor Minister Bud Pinder.
Here.
Vice Mayor Don Horton.
Here.
And Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I hear we have Pastor Bruce from Coral Isle Church. Would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, we've been sitting up here having discussions, should we do a prayer or not do a prayer? So, since we have Tony Ham in here, I'm gonna go ask him to please, let's do a prayer this time, and I appreciate it greatly. Tony?
Well, thank you, and council, welcome on board. I didn't get a chance to greet all of you last time, so welcome. Let's bow together. Father, thank you so much for tonight. Thank you for this council. We thank you for the work that they'll do, and we look forward to it. We pray your blessing over this meeting and all that is discussed, and give us sound minds and clear heads, and we ask these things in your precious and holy name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so, any emergency deletions or additions from the council? Deb?
I have an addition to discussion item on sewers.
Microphone?
Sorry. I have an addition to the sewer, in discussion item for this concerning sewers.
Where is that on the, what number?
It's under Mayor Counsel Communications. It's VI, VI six.
Do you want to discuss it, or do you want to pull it?
There's nothing there under Mayor.
There's nothing there. I'd like a short, very short discussion.
Okay. Deb Gillis. Anyone else? Don?
I'm good.
Steve?
Yeah, I think we have a lot of people in the room that are gonna want to talk on one of these items. Can we move that item up to as soon as possible, so that people that came from a long way away can, don't have to stay the whole time?
We just had that discussion. We already had that discussion, and we've already moved a bunch of people around. Can I get some guidance from you, Mr. Manager? That what we talked about, moving it?
Are you referring to the rogo discussion item? I'm sorry.
Yeah, 10B.
Yeah. Well, I wanted to clarify in pursuant to the conversation I had with Mayor Mahoney, that the vast majority of the items on the agenda are on consent, so there's only two items on regular agenda, and it would be at the council's pleasure whether you wanted to move the second one up to the first one, and first one to second. But it doesn't, it looks like there's a lot ahead of it, but it's really on consent, assuming all of those consent items stay on consent.
So, it's not gonna be that long, is basically what he's saying, so...
So, they say. All right. Very good.
Anybody else with anything?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I may, can I add just a quick request for an executive session during the attorney-manager discussion item?
Yes.
It'll be 15 seconds or less.
I'm gonna time you. Got it. Okay, so, nobody else? Okay, first, I want to say a couple things. I want to thank my council members for putting me in this position. I don't know if I'm happy or upset, or whatever, but I will do my best, and I thank everybody for your trust in me. I would like to see this council come together as one and respect each other, and when you want to speak, if you would raise your hand, I will acknowledge you, and do remember when you're speaking, there's four other people up here who also want to speak. And for the audience, I would appreciate the same respect back to us, and we'll see how it goes, but I'm really looking for some good harmony in this new council, so I thank you. Before we get started, I want to thank Judy Hall, I don't know if she's here or not, for the phenomenal, phenomenal job she did in Winterfest, and I don't know if everybody was here. A big hand for Judy. You always do phenomenal job, and it's my pleasure to work with you, so thank you.
Thank you.
Terry Abel, where's our chief? Here he is. We are doing kids in the Upper Keys who are not gonna have a lot of stuff at Christmas. We're still collecting toys for them, so if you would like to bring us an unwrapped gift, please do. You can drop it off at, to the fire station, and we would greatly appreciate your help. So, I thank everybody for that as well.
Sharon?
Yes?
Do, are they collecting on the parade on Saturday night also?
Absolutely, ma'am.
Thank you.
So, on the 15th, when they go around caroling, they're gonna be pulling a little cart behind them for gifts, so please remember that everybody deserves a really nice Christmas, so I thank you. Before we start the reports and presentations, I'd like to introduce two women who are here tonight who are extremely important people. Representative Lauren Mello, would you please stand up? And June Smith. Lauren Mello is the reason we are looking at a fireboat, and I appreciate what you're doing for the Keys, I'm sure everybody else is, and I'd like to give her just a couple minutes to explain the program, how it works, and the fact that we are forever grateful to you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. For the record, Representative Lauren Mello, I represent District 82, which is Eastern Collier and all of Hendry County. I want to start by saying that your representative, Jim Mooney, had given me his blessing when I moved forward this past session in '24, and filed four different appropriations for the Florida Keys. June Smith will follow. June Smith is a close family friend. She was also a constituent prior to redistricting, and out of tragedy within her own family has kind of been the crusader of medical fire rescue boats here in the Florida Keys. I was born and raised in Naples. My parents were married in Big Pine. I spent a lot of time in the Florida Keys growing up, primarily in Marathon, and was in a boating accident when I was 17 years old in Naples. At that time, we did not have any fire rescue boats. We have a great program in Collier now, in Lee, and also in Marco Island. When the Smith family came to me and spoke to me about the Florida Keys not having a program, and not having any advanced life support on the water, I met with several of my fire chiefs that run their marine programs in Collier and Lee County. Representative Mooney helped me facilitate meetings down here in the Keys. I attended multiple meetings where we brought all the fire chiefs and fire personnel together to discuss the program, what it took to get the program in place, and then I agreed to run the appropriations of 1.2 million to fund those boats after we did the research and discovered a brand-new boat that you could put in the water was 200,000. I asked for 300,000 for each location to make sure that we covered any incidentals, and that maybe weren't in the purchase of the boat, so that there would not be a burden of any resources from any of the communities, the four communities that we selected in the Keys. I've had you all come to my office in Tallahassee, and this is just, I want to talk up here and educate everyone, so that we don't have any issues. Two of the appropriations were fully funded. One of them was for Isle of Marauda. That appropriation was vetoed here at the local level through the governor's office, so as you can imagine, that was a shock to me after I worked very hard to put this program in place, to run the appropriation. I actually even put the appropriations for the Florida Keys above my own county, and the needs of my own county. So, I was shocked when that happened, and my presence being here is just to facilitate communication. If you all have any questions or concerns about the program, I'm happy to address those. I'm happy to give you even my cellphone number, if you want to call me to discuss offline, or if you even want to come to my office in the Capitol and discuss it with me. I'm happy to do that. I will, I have given the Smith family my commitment that I will run the appropriation again next year in the '25 session, so I'm hoping to have your support, so that we don't have another challenge like we had this past session. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Council? Go ahead.
I, I was sitting out there in the audience the night that there was a 5-0 vote to, so how, why was the, why was this vote that was supposed to come to Isle of Marauda vetoed?
Councilmember, I really don't know that. I did actually attend one of your meetings, when I believe Chief Abel came and asked for that vote, and I was on the call, and I did address this council. I, I don't have any answers for you, other than the governor's office told me that it was vetoed at the local level. Outside of that, I, unfortunately, I, I don't know, which is why I just want to be here this evening, prior to me getting started again and running the football down the field. I just want to make sure if there are concerns, I address them.
I thank you very much. I hope that we can look into the situation and see whatever happened. You know, I, it was, that I recall, it was a 5-0 vote, and I was pretty excited about it. I, many years ago, was on the first dive team for volunteer fire and ambulance with Tavernier, and been a great supporter of, of our fire department and our rescue department, and I think it's absolutely necessary in this, in our town. So, thank you for all the work you're doing for us.
Councilman Pinder?
Representative Mello, I'd like to say thank you very much for what you did. Actually, one of your marine guys came here and told us the whole program, months back, I don't know if it was this year or last year, but it was before we voted on it, and explained the whole situation and the need of saving lives, okay? And one life matters, so I want to say thank you, and anything we can do, I'm only one of five, but I, I feel we voted, we did vote 5-0 on this. I don't, it's mysterious. I've called Tallahassee until I'm blue in the face, trying to find out what went on, and I have a very good idea what happened, but it wasn't right, okay? When we voted 5-0, and, and somebody in our staff, somebody called Tallahassee and said we didn't need it. That's what I've been told. So, I think it's wrong that when we voted 5-0, so I'm just like, I want the community to know. That, I feel, I feel very bad. Here, here's a mother of a young lady that lost her daughter over this, and we voted 5-0, and, and somehow, somewhere, something, somebody is not right. So, I hope this year that people will stand up, that will stand, and we will make it right. And thank you for your service, and your continued service, in working with Jim and, and the others on this. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And, you know you have my support, and you know we've talked about this, and we will carry that football together down the field next year. You have my word. Deb?
I also looked into, and I knew we had a 5-0, actually, we had two 5-0 votes, and I was quite surprised to find out that it got vetoed. I think it's a necessary thing. We've seen lots of, we, we're this skinny little island of ground, and we have so much that goes on in the water, and that's where we push our, our people, our locals, our tourists, everything. So, I am, I'm very sorry and apologize to the, all the work that you did to try to help us, and it got vetoed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like, if Ms. June would come up, please, and I want to say that I have the great honor of getting to know both of these ladies, and I am very proud to say, January 19th at the Laurali, I'll be doing another one of my famous fundraisers to raise money for Terry, for the training and the needs we have for the boat for Isle of Marauda. So, I'm hoping everybody will come out, support it, donate something for me for the auction, and I want to raise a lot of money, because this is a wonderful woman, and I, I'm very pleased that we have got to be friends.
Hi, my name is June Smith. Ended up here back in 2017. We lost our daughter in a boating accident, and took a little bit of time to figure out a lot with grief and dealing, but I realized that, I knew that day you were completely helpless. We called 911, we begged for help, and down in Cudjoe, it was 5:30, and there was nobody that could physically help us in any department, all four depart, nobody had no way to get us. We begged, we, I'd never listen to 911s, but we tried several times to beg for help, and then a towboat person got us there, but I can't quite understand how here, in a boating community, something goes wrong, you're your own doctor, you're your own advocate, you're your own way back to shore, and you're not getting medical help till you touch land. So, to me, it just, since then, every time I've heard of an accident, I feel I know exactly their fear, their hopelessness, and they won't get help until you touch land, so it's just, and there's been several, several more accidents in the last seven years, so it just scares me that it is a boating community, there's water everywhere, and it seems odd that there's nothing on the water to help anybody, no matter what, if it's a heartache, heart attack, a broken arm, anything, you're not getting help till you can touch land. You can ask me questions, I don't know what else to say.
Does anybody want to say anything? No? Thank you so very much, and I look forward to spending time with you in January, and support our fundraiser, it's a great cause, and these are great women. I thank you guys so much for coming.
And thank you for putting this together for January. Really appreciate it.
No worries. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Thank you very much.
Okay, let's move on to reports, presentations, and announcements. Where's my good friend Richard Clark?
He's hiding.
Oh, he hiding, here's Richard Clark to talk to us about freebie. How are you?
Oh, I'm doing well, thank you. I learned my lesson when I was in your job, to keep my back to the wall. So, I just wanted to come briefly tonight. You know, Mayor, I appreciate the invitation. We obviously are running a somewhat similar service, only, really, the most similar thing about it is that it's on-demand. Ours runs much differently, really because we have an entirely different set of factors in Stock and Key West than we have here in Isle of Marauda. And I expect when we build out the other three locate, other three geo-fenced areas, they'll also operate entirely different from Isle of Marauda and Key West, because Key Largo is different from Big Pine, is different from Marathon, just the way it's gonna be. So, as you know, in the past few months, we have had new leadership at our, at the county. We have a new county administrator, and she and I have talked about a litany of things we're doing from a transportation perspective, this being one of them. And so, what Rob and I have talked endlessly back and forth about how this process should really work, the most important thing for, for your city manager, for my county manager, and my five elected bosses, they, they want to see me work directly with Rob, and they want to see us put something together that they can see, vote, approve, bring to you, so that you can see, vote, approve, amend, whatever, but, you know, we've got some pragmatists on there, and they're like, "Look, what if we put this together and they don't like it?" And I was like, "Well, that makes perfect sense. We should, let us do our due diligence, that's what staff is for." So, we are gonna do that, we are gonna go through, I just, that, we wanted to put that on the screen for you guys to see, kind of, how we're gonna do it. We'll, we'll take some formal votes, if you will, just so it's on the record that this is what we're gonna do. At the end of the day, our attorneys and your attorneys will have to figure out the interlocal agreement. The best thing I heard was that we do take a little bit of Tavernier, which is unincorporated, which really makes things easier for us. So, on a, on a bigger scale, we, I've been working with FDOT on some inter-island ferry feasibility work. The FDOT has agreed, they're gonna work with me, I think they're gonna fund it for me, so, for $500,000 worth of effort. Isle of Marauda is clearly one of our, you know, this would be a home run, I don't know that we have the infrastructure here, but the idea would be Key West, Marathon, Isle of Marauda, for inter-island ferry only, walk-up, no cars, so we're gonna be looking at that this year. We just started our bus stop study, that's gonna be really, really in-depth. You'll see me a lot on that effort as we build. It's not just what it looks like, where it is, how it is, it's really, where are people using these things, and where are we hailing, and where do we need the safety, and how do we comply with FDOT rules? And then, last but certainly not least, we have reconstituted our Transportation Coordination Committee. That committee, two years ago, put together a list of 183 projects, and they put everything that people requested on that list. They then brought the elected officials together, they prioritized based on how many people said, "This is what we should do," so it was very meritocracy, it was very democratic. And the top 12 things, they, FDOT did all of them. That's where our top 12 priorities. Of the 183, 75 of the 183 have been addressed, either in the five-year work plan or been done, and now I'm grabbing the remainder that just had the newest five-year work plan come out, I'm gonna mirror that. But what we're gonna come up with, with your help, is a new list, and the best thing about that list is, when FDOT does it, it's 100% paid by FDOT. So, before we start pursuing grants or start making 50/50 obligations, let's see how much FDOT is gonna pick up what we really need, especially on overseas. So, I know that was fast, I, I know you've got a lot of folks here in the room, I didn't want to, but I'll happily ask, answer any question that I can.
I'm raising my hand for a question. It's my understanding that tonight you are looking for us to say, "Yes, move forward." Is that correct?
That's, that's what we would like, just on the record, I don't need a form, but...
Okay, so, is everybody okay with everything?
Moving forward with this process.
Yes. So, Steve?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with it, but I, Sharon, I'd like to say something.
Okay. I'm just, are you okay?
I'm good.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. Hey, Richard, I, I just wanted to say thank you, and I had a couple of your good friends that, from up north, really, are very, made a very good recommend, Katie Wiles and Mayor Dylan Rumroth, so I just wanted to turn that in, because they, they said, "Man, you are, you know, this guy knows what he's doing, he's really good at what he does and everything." So, they gave you, I, I did a little due diligence.
Uh-huh. They better say good things. I know where all of their bodies are buried, so...
Anyway, thanks, Richard.
Does anybody have any questions? Deb?
The presentation that you just had on the wall, I'd like a hard copy of that or an email copy.
Sure, of course.
Okay. Okay, so, anything else, anyone? So, we're good?
Great.
No, I'm looking forward to go through the process.
Fantastic. We'll put our noses, we'll get it done as quickly as we can.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Richard.
Thanks for coming up. Hey, I like that shirt, too.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we're gonna move on to John. Is this where you want to say, request for guidance?
Yeah, it's different than this, but I can, what I had asked to be added on before, but I can do that really quickly now, too, if you like.
Sure.
Pursuant to Florida Statute 286.011, subsection 8A, governing public meetings, I am the attorney for Isle of Marauda Village of Islands, wish to advise the village during this public meeting that I desire, desire advice concerning the litigation of Thomas Yates versus Isle of Marauda Village of Islands at all, in the Circuit Court of the 16th Judicial Circuit in and for Monroe County, Florida, case number 2024 CA 479P. I would ask that we hold an executive session on either January 7th or January 9th, I will coordinate with the clerk, who will coordinate with everyone's schedules for the, the scheduling. Attending the session will be the mayor and council members, village manager, myself, John Quick, and special counsel Eric Steppenblain Utes.
So, January 7th or January 9th?
Or, or January 9th.
Okay.
And we'll plan to do it before the council meeting, since you all will already be here, and then that way we can flow in.
Is everybody good with that? Do you have anything, Deb?
Well, I just had a question, because I saw somewhere that you were wanting, I thought it was the manager wanting a, I don't know whether it's called an executive session concerning bargaining agreement.
Yeah.
That was on the 7th also.
Yeah, that's why I said either the 7th or the 9th. Originally, it was gonna be the 7th, but I was advised that there, about the bargaining session, so it'll be one of those two days. We'll, we'll coordinate which one, which day, and, you know, we'll, we'll figure, yeah, we'll get it figured out. That way, we're, that way, we don't have you here all day.
Just let us know.
Steve, anything?
Yeah, no.
Okay.
I think January 7th was fine, now I guess we're doing another one, maybe on the 9th.
Yeah, exactly. And we'll coordinate it and get it set up, yeah. The other two issues are... The other two issues are, were requests for guidance on mediation participants. There is a mediation scheduled in the Mark Gregg Land Use Challenge. That is scheduled for, I believe it's January 8th. There was a mediation scheduled in the Barley Matter, the, in relation to the right-of-way down on the, the intersection of De Leon Avenue and Avocado. That's since been postponed, but we, we had it on the schedule anyway. We might as well talk about it. In mediation, there is, mediation is a confidential process. It's, it's required by, in the Gregg Matter, by statute, in the Barley Matter, by court order. The parties are required to go through the process. It's, it is what it sounds like. We get together. There's a mediator. They decide on, you know, parties decide to see if they can reach an agreement. But it's different when it comes to a local government, because we can't agree to anything in a mediation. It has to come back before the council to be decided by a majority of the council in an open public meeting. But the mediation itself does need to occur in a confidential setting, meaning not in a public meeting. So because of that, we can't have all five of you together, because you can't, you can't mesh a confidential private mediation with Florida sunshine law. So what, you know, Rob and I are looking for is, we'd like to have, you know, one person from the council. It can be a different person for each one. It can be the same. It doesn't really matter. But one person to serve as a representative with Rob in the mediation. That way, if there is anything to bring back, I mean, my, my belief is, I think it's better to have a council member there, because if, if one council member is supporting, you know, bringing it back, at least you know one person supports it. As opposed to just, you know, Rob and I thinking you might, and then we don't know. At the end of, like I said, ultimately, three of the five of you would need to approve it anyway. So whether one supports it or not isn't determinative, but it's, it's at least one.
It's better than zero.
Better than zero. So our request is, is if you all can come to a, you know, give us directions, who you would like to appoint to serve as the village representative from council. During those, again, like I said, the Mark Gregg one is currently scheduled for January 8th here at Village Hall. And the Barley one is to be determined, so whoever it is will, obviously, will work with his or her schedule when coordinating it.
And so when do you need that person?
Well, the Gregg one, we would, it would be best to do either tonight or Thursday.
Okay.
I mean, theoretically, we could do it on, on the 7th, when our next meeting is. But the mediators tend to like to know who the participants are, and it would be better to, to let the mediator know in advance. So tonight would be ideal, or, or Thursday.
Should we wait till he gets back?
Yeah, make, do it since he's not here.
Nominate Buddy.
Okay, it's Buddy. That he gets for stepping out.
There you go.
I guess we should wait till he gets back. So can we come back to this, then? I don't know what he's doing.
Yeah, let's come back to it.
Yes.
Okay. So.
Either that, or we can just voluntold him right now.
I think we should. There he is. You're volunteering.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Buddy. We're really happy for you.
You know, that's what happens when you volunteer.
Okay. Citizen Advisory Committee?
Did you tell him what he volunteered for?
Is it Buddy?
Is he really?
Really? Okay. Buddy, do you want to be the person in the mediation with Mark Gregg? Yes, thank you.
I don't mind doing the Mary Barley, but not the Mark Gregg.
Okay. I, I don't really, but I'll, I'll do it if I need to.
I'll do it if you want. I don't care. I've been in mediations before.
Do you want to do it? I don't care.
If Deb wants to do it, let her. Doesn't matter. I'll do it.
You want to flip a coin?
Yeah.
That, which one of you?
Alls we're doing is reporting back to the council what happened. I'm good with it.
Okay. All right. Let Buddy do it, then.
So Buddy for, for Mark Gregg, and then Vice Mayor Horton for the Barley Matter?
Yes. That's good. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Okay. Now, moving on to Citizens Advisory Committee, Greg Dully with the land acquisition.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Council and Mayor Mahoney. Thank you for your time. My name is Greg Dully, and I serve as the chair for the Land Acquisition Committee. It's my second term. And we put forth an action plan to you guys that we'd like you to look over. And understand this, you know, we understand that we're a committee, and our purpose is to advise and counsel, or, or present information to you, and you guys ultimately make that decision. So know that as you go through that, the committee has put together a letter that they've asked me to read to you. And I'd like to do that now, if that's okay. One, the committee's support for the Land Acquisition Action Plan. The Isle Marada Land Acquisition Advisory Committee wishes to express its strong support to the proposed Land Acquisition Action Plan. This plan was developed at extensive committee input, stakeholder involvement, and with staff expertise. We are confident this plan will serve as a useful tool and guidance document for Isle Marada's land acquisition program moving forward. We extend our appreciation to the council for its leadership in prioritizing its initiative and for allocating funds to safeguard Isle Marada's unique natural assets. The program's success rests on the council's dedication on environmental preservation, which ensures the Isle Marada remains a haven for diverse ecosystems and wildlife. The Glenn Property, number two, the Glenn Property Acquisition and Naming. The following village acquisition of the Glenn family's property near Venetian shores and Founder's Park, the committee is proposing naming the property. The following names have been suggested for the council's consideration. And we had listed Glenn, the Glenn Preserve, Glenn Family Wildlife Preserve, Cotton Key Preserve, Sunset Park Preserve. Each name represents some historical ecological significance of the property. Importantly, this property offers diverse habitats such as mangrove forests, hardwood hammocks, inland ponds, and prime habitat for wading birds and crocodiles alike. The committee proposes holding a ribbon-cutting ceremony. We'd like to schedule the ceremony the first quarter of 2025 to celebrate the property's acquisition and naming. This event would honor the Glenn's family contribution. It would formally introduce the site to the public. Number three, proposal for a less-than-fee land acquisition program. To maximize the reach of the council's budget allocation for land acquisition, the committee seeks the council's guidance on developing a less-than-fee land acquisition program familiar to the successful model implemented by Monroe County. Such a program would allow Isle Marada to acquire conservation easements rather than, than full property ownership, which would expand conservation efforts cost-effectively, maintain private ownership while ensuring environmental protection, and potentially reduce takings, claims, or lawsuits. Recognized the county's success with this approach, the committee proposes inviting the Monroe County representatives to present their program at a future council meeting. This presentation would provide valuable insights into the structure, funding, and outcomes of the Monroe's less-than-fee program, and offer a foundation for adapting this model to our community needs. The committee asks that the council direct staff to conduct an inventory into the parcels that less-than-fee opportunities would be available within the Village of Isle Marada, however, I think that's already been completed. And then we thank the council for its continued support, and look forward to working together to advance Isle Marada's land acquisition goals.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Dully?
No, no questions. I would say thank you, Greg, for what you do, and your time, and everything, what you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Are, are we going to pick a name tonight for them, or is that future?
You know, when did you, I guess it would be before the ceremony to have the name, and--
Yeah, no pressure on you guys, and it, those are four names that the committee came up with. They're not written in stone. They, we just thought they were good ideas, so.
I agree.
If you guys have other suggestions, you know, that's fine as well.
Do you have a suggestion, Deb? Which one you like? Anybody?
Well, I don't know. It's, maybe somebody else can give me a little bit more insight on it, but the, one of the Glenn names seems obvious to me. And if we want to keep it simple, that would be the Glenn Preserve. But the family was involved, so I guess I don't really have a choice there.
Yeah, I agree with you, though. Anybody else have a thought?
Between Glenn and Glenn Family Wildlife Preserve?
Glenn Preserve, I think is easier.
Or the Glenn Family Preserve.
Okay. Glenn Family Preserve?
Glenn Preserve.
Yeah.
Just two names or three names?
He's saying Glenn Family or saying--
Oh, you're saying Glenn Family. I was just thinking Glenn Preserve.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, because it was the family, they were all--
See what you started?
That was supposed to be the easy one.
We have time.
Mini mini maimo?
I think we have.
I think we have time. We'll, we'll figure it out.
We'll mull it over. Anybody have anything else for him this evening?
Greg, thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much.
If I could just add one thing, the, just so you know, with, with the land acquisition plan, we basically run under the county's program. So all the properties that are identified are part of the Florida Forever program. We are asking that maybe a couple of other properties be added to that, or at least be presented to the county to, to either allow them or not allow them. So all the funding for this comes from the county. It's not coming out of the, the village's budget.
Is that, is that something we're going to talk about on Tab 9?
Probably. I just want to make sure you knew that.
I've got stuff for Peter on that. We'll just wait till then. Thank you.
If you pull it from the consent agenda.
It's not on the consent. I don't believe.
Madam Mayor.
Greg, is that, you said that comes from some funding from the Florida Forever?
It's a program that's, that's through the county, so what we, since we don't have a budget to buy our own land, we've restricted ourselves to just focusing on those properties. So the county's acquiring them, and they have the process and the funds and everything allocated. All we're doing is, instead of letting the county decide which properties in the village they want to target, we're kind of shortening the list and maybe, you know, saying, "Hey, you know, we feel that these, we're not going to get them all." So if we had a, if they had a list of 30 of them, like, these are the top 10 that we suggest. So we're really making a suggestion to the county is to please focus on these properties first, so.
And then the county receives money from that act that would be able to purchase those that you recommend?
Yes.
Well, I, I just want to point out that something, something that's very important to talk about when we go to Tallahassee with our representative to, because I believe they're trying to get that in perpetuity. And I don't think it is yet. I think we, that gets renewed annually. But I think that's something that we need to lobby to get in perpetuity, so it's a no-brainer, because of the great things that, that money goes toward.
But, but that's also, Greg, that's part of the Monroe County Land Authority.
Correct.
Right? That's it. Because that's what Christine Hurley ran.
Yes, yes, sir.
Right.
Okay, yep.
So concerning the less-than-fee, I'd like to at least request that we get some kind of presentation and, and consider adopting it in Isle Marada.
Our goal for that program, again, it's, it's a county program, and our goal really is to kind of minimize maybe possible potential takings, claims going forward. It's a program where if a resident has two properties, you know, property A and property B, and property A is their residence, and perhaps property B could be adjoining across the street, or whatever, but they have no intention of developing it. Maybe they parked their trailers there, or what have you. It's a volunteer program, so nobody's mandated to do it. I think we identified like 103 properties within the village. And it's a way to go to them and say, "Listen, if you have no intention of developing that property, what the county has structured," so I don't know what we would do. They offer them, depending on what they determine, they base the land determination on the, what they're assessed for. So some of them may be assessed for $65,000 or $50,000, but the maximum for the county's program is $100,000. And essentially, we would approach those people and say, "If you're not having intentions of developing that property, that additional property," ideally, we get them to merge it, and that would be great. But if, if they don't agree to that, or if the village can't make them do that, we would offer them some type of compensation, up to $100,000. They would maintain ownership of that additional property, but they would give up any future rights. It would be deed-restricted going forward that they could not be developed, so.
But they could still use it as an accessory structure for a shed, or a garage, or a pool, or something like that.
Correct. 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 So they would still have full use of the property. They're just signing over, saying that, starting now and forever and ever, this, this property will be deed-restricted, cannot be developed.
And the funds would come out of what, Greg?
Well, in the past, the council has given us $1 million in our budget for the Land Acquisition Committee. So we were, perhaps if the, if we did some more due diligence, once we have the county come in here and propose their program, and we kick, you know, work out the finite details, we would propose perhaps using those funds for that. Because the grand scheme of things, we can't buy too many properties with, with a million bucks in--
Right. 103 properties is a $10, $10,300 exposure, so.
Understood.
Let's go find the money, the county's money, and sustainability money, and those kind of things, from state.
That's, that's the reason I would like to at least explore the program for Isle Marada, so that we have one more tool in our toolbox to eliminate the need for allocations.
100%. Yeah. All for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
Madam Mayor, just on, on the, back to the Glenn item, I think I can maybe make it a little easier. We did have an agreement with them that, that talked about naming of the preserve, and it said that, it didn't talk about the specific name, but it did say the Glenn family shall be referenced in the naming of the preserve. So I would recommend we use family, and it, it doesn't say we have to, but I think that's a stricter reading of the agreement.
That's fine. That's in the agreement.
I think we're all--
That solves that.
Yeah. Sorry, I had to pull the agreement up. Sorry, it took me so long.
Do you need a motion, or just an agreement?
I would, like, why don't we, I would do it as a motion, so that we can formalize it, so that it's, it's done.
Do I have a motion? You want to do the motion?
I'll do the motion, that we go with the naming of the Glenn Family Preserve.
Okay. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Don Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Deb Gillis?
Yes.
Councilmember Steve Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Buddy Pender?
Yes.
And Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
Mayor, our motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Okay. All right, Marnie, I think the next one is you.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I wanted to get this on the agenda, to get the new council thinking about appointments. So at the April 11th, 2023 meeting, council adopted ordinance 2305 concerning committee appointments. Then on September 7th and September 28th, appointments were made for two-year terms to all of our committees. Then on June 20, or excuse me, June 11th of 2024, three members of the LPA had their terms extended to accomplish staggering as required by the ordinance. So prior to 2023, the Clerk's Office handled the annual appointment process that was done each May. After the ordinance was adopted, the village manager's office took it over and moved the application process onto the employment portal. So, and then that village manager and his assistant both left, and interim village manager Brian Cook did the presentation at the September 2023 appointment process. So I put this on the agenda to keep the process moving. I don't have ownership of the processes, so, you know, I'm happy to take suggestions. Just wanted to get you all thinking about how we can do the appointments moving forward. So I have several suggestions. You can change them, approve them, whatever you'd like. So the, before the ordinance was changed, we did have 10 people on most committees, so we're kind of looking at keeping that at 10. Happy to take a different number. I do recall us having a conversation sometime last year about maybe changing them to seven, but we really didn't do that. So, you know, it's just kind of, as we have a new council coming in, you know, what priorities are.
Can I make a suggestion?
Absolutely.
How about if you sent us in an email, the committees, who's, well, well, let me just finish, please. The committees and the vacancies, and to start seeing if anybody, what places we're looking to fill, and put that out there. And then, yeah, I know, I saw that, but I'm just saying, maybe we should put it out there now to the public, so they can apply if they want to.
We do have opening, we do have the openings right now for LPA, nearshore, I think, land acquisition.
Workforce affordable.
Yeah, workforce affordable, thank you, Don. Yeah, so those, the, it is open on the employment portal right now. Currently, we only have one application that's been filled out, but Stephanie Rodriguez of Rob's Office is going to be doing a push on our social media and our website to promote the program more.
Okay. Okay.
Rob, can you include that in your manager letter the next, next week, too, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I, also, I think I suggested that, you know, if we could reach out and find either the newspaper that maybe would do a PSA, or the radio, or I, I think we just need to advertise it as thoroughly as possible.
I agree.
Steve, do you have anything? Buddy?
Nope.
Okay, so is that a start for you?
Sure. Yes, absolutely. What we would like to do, though, before we move on, is in addition to our village committees, we do have a few partner organizations that are looking for representatives. Currently, Buddy is, has been the representative for these first three, which is the Florida Keys Transportation Coordinating Committee, which, as Mr. Clark has mentioned, is going to be meeting more often. So probably expect monthly meetings with the target date of June to present something to FDOT. So, you know, our participation would probably be more than it has been in the past on that. So it would be a good idea to appoint some council member to that. We also have the Florida Keys National Marine Sanctuary Advisory Council, which meets bimonthly. The Florida Keys National Marine Walleye Quality Protection Program Steering Committee, which meets roughly quarterly. And a new committee that we are applying to, which is the International Council for Local Environment Initiative. And a new committee that we are applying to, which is the International Council for Local Environment Initiatives. So our sustainability, um, program manager, Alyssa Panzer, is applying for that, and Jennifer can tell you what's needed for, um, our representative.
It's more commonly known as ICLI. It's a national organization, um, that we would like to be a member of. They, um, help municipality, or communities and municipalities with sustainable issues, and Alyssa would like to join. Uh, as part of the application, they're requesting a member of the council be the lead elected official, so, uh, we've included it in this group. Alyssa will be the primary contact and go to all the events and, you know, and be the one to do all the work. It would just be sort of the primary contact for, I think, for any technical assistance or any funding that we might request from them in the future. So it's more of just a name that we need at this time. There's no work needed at this time.
Does anybody want to volunteer for that?
Uh, you know, in the past, you've always showed interest in the Florida Keys Transportation.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, maybe we should, uh, reach out to you if we're personally interested in something and see how that goes. I mean, I, I am interested in the transportation.
Yeah. I would ask Sharon to, uh, do that since she's been working on that with Richard.
Okay.
I, I worked on it years ago. It was very, very informative.
Do you want, you okay with me?
I think you should.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, then I'll do that.
Steve, do you want any of the, the NOAA stuff, or? You wanna think of it?
I would consider maybe the sanctuary liaison.
Or what about the water thing, Steve, that?
Possibly that. I just have to see what the schedule is on those.
As I said, um.
I do that. I do number four.
What's number four?
The international council.
Uh, Don would like to do the international council.
Okay, okay.
And so what does that leave us? Go ahead. Any, anybody? Debbie, you gotta get something for you.
The water quality, is that you, Mr. Friedman? The sanctuary water quality or sanctuary advisory council?
Um, the, they're, they're both different?
They're two different committees.
They're different.
Go ahead and take both.
Sure, I'll take both.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just the, I'm not sure what the county rules are, particularly on the transportation committee, um, in terms of how the appointment gets made.
Mm-hmm.
Just to make sure that we cover our bases, um, you know, Rob, you know, Rob and I were talking, and I think it would be best to make a motion to, normally, Madam Mayor, you could just appoint, but I don't want the county then to come back and say, wait, we need something more formal because of the, the process that's required for ours, so I would suggest with, that we make a motion to, uh, confirm these, uh, at least that appointment, uh, if not all, just to, just to cover our bases in case.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion that Sharon is the person for the transportation committee.
I'll second it.
Do you, do we wanna include just all of them at the same time? Let's just wrap it into one?
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't hurt to, to.
So.
I mean, maybe Marnie can read back what the appointments were.
There you go.
Okay, that, we're gonna vote on, Marnie can read the names and then we can, uh, vote on it, so I make a motion for all of them, from Sharon to Steve to Don.
Okay, so that would be, um, Mayor Mahoney for the Florida Keys Transportation Coordinating Committee through Monroe County. Uh, Councilmember Friedman for the Florida Keys National Marine Sanctuary Advisory Council, and the Florida Keys National Marine Sanctuary Water Quality Protection Program Steering Committee, and Vice Mayor Horton for the International Community Council for Local Environmental Initiatives. And we have a motion by Councilman Pender and a second by Vice Mayor Horton, so.
Do you wanna call the roll?
Call the roll.
Okay.
All right, Councilmember Pender?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Gillis?
Yes.
And Mayor Mahoney?
Yes.
That motion passes five to zero.
Thank you much. Moving to mayor council communication, I know Deb wanted to say something, but can I jump ahead of you with something real quick?
Of course.
Um, I would like to, um, figure out how we go about, uh, having the staff organize, uh, something about food trucks. We do not have anything on food trucks right now, and I know there is, there are people here who have concerns about where food trucks can go or they can't, and we don't, do we, uh, do we have any, uh, regulations?
They, um, uh, so there are some state restrictions on regulations, but they are treated as restaurants in the village. So, uh, they are allowed in the same locations that restaurants would be allowed, uh, so they're treated as such, uh, and have historically been.
So I'm seeing a head shaking no in the audience, so how do we go about?
Well, he's also representing a food truck and challenging the village, so.
Where, where there's an active code violation.
Okay, so we, we do have then something on food trucks, see? I was, and he's saying no still. Okay, go ahead, Deb.
So we used to have one, and it got preempted by the state. Is this, correct, correct me if I say wrong here. Uh, and that we worked on one, uh, but it never did get finalized as to what we were going to do with the fact that the state's preemption. And I don't know whether that was at the previous council, or while I was still on council before, I don't remember how many years ago it was, but I know that there was something in the works.
There was a pilot program.
No, there was a pilot program, and then when it expired.
It's when you were on council before, Deb.
The pilot program was, but then when that expired because of the fact that, uh.
Pre-exemption.
The, yeah, there was something else worked on, so there's some history in the books, is, I guess, is what I'm saying to go by.
But what I'm hearing him say is we don't, we can't have it, that we're governed by the state of Florida.
Well, you can have certain things. There, there's, there's boundaries that we follow.
So can we look into that?
We can, and, and, but just, I mean, from my perspective and from planning's perspective, we do have something. It doesn't mean we can't modify it, or we can't change it. But, um, if you look at the definition of a restaurant in our code, uh, a fire truck, or, not fire truck, a food truck falls within that. Yeah, if a fire truck is serving food, I guess they fall within it too.
All right, so.
But it doesn't mean we can't, again, within the bounds of what the state statute allows, it doesn't mean we can't, you know, if you'd like, bring something else back before you ought to consider a, an amendment.
Does anybody have an appetite for that, food? Get it? Does anybody have?
I think, I think it ought to be looked at, because I, I know that there's a, a problem with one of the churches.
Exactly, so are we all good with that, to give direction to see?
Sure.
Okay, okay, so can we put that on the list?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, Deb, you ready to go with your?
I am, if, if I'm next.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, uh, we all during the campaign talked about sewers, and we all know that we've had, um, depending on how you wanna count them, six or eight sewer line breaks, and, um, I served on the council when we put the original sewer lines and worked together, and during this time when we're trying to negotiate and figure out how to settle our problem with Key Largo, I would like to sit as the council advise, not advisory, um, liaison. Just sit in on those meetings to try to help spur them to completion.
Is that common, right, Rob, or how does that work?
Well, those are, the, the meetings are involving the engineering firms, Key Largo's, uh, management, the village management. Uh, the next step in the process actually is, there's supposed to be a modeling report that was worked on both by Key Largo's staff and our engineering staff, and I'm waiting for that. It's supposed to be due December thirteenth. Uh, once we get to see that report, we're gonna take a look at it, reconvene with Key Largo, and see if there's agreement on which exact type of improvements are necessary to, uh, get this project finally moving forward. Uh, we'll also have a meeting coming up with DEP on the same issue. So we want to make sure that we have a clear path forward and that we expedite that to our full stability. As to a, a member of council sitting in on that, uh, one of the things that we did, um, early on in this process was try to focus in on as few as, number of people as possible, because what had happened in the past is we ended up with attorneys and members of the Key Largo Wastewater District and other people getting involved in that conversation, and it ended up with people sniping at one another and really digging in their heels. And we tried to actually retreat from that position to get the, the staff and the engineers to talk to one another face to face, and drop the, the, the legal aspects of it, who's required under which contract, the threats of litigation that were going on, and the whole nine yards. So, um, I, I don't have an objection necessarily to one of our council members getting involved, but I think, um, that, that also leads us back down the path where we were before I took this up a few months back, trying to make sure that we reach consensus and actually move forward with the improvements.
The, part of the reason why I'd like to sit there is I know most of those people, not all of them, because some of them have changed from before, and think I have a, a, a good enough relationship with them that I can help spur it on, not cause problem. Uh, to, to get down to the cause, uh, make sure the DEP doesn't do any kind of, um, consent order against us, uh, to get Key Largo and us on the same page as to what we need to do, um, why the breaks are happening, all of that. I, I just think I have a lot of background in it and, and know a lot of those people. That's part of the reason why I wanted to get involved.
How about I contact Peter Rosasco and, and get his pulse on that question too, because I suspect if, if I bring a council member in, he may want, maybe not, uh, to bring in somebody from the Key Largo Wastewater Treatment District's council, but I, I think a, a good next step for, would be for me at least, to check with Peter and say, hey, Peter.
I'd like to comment, Mayor, when you have a chance.
Go ahead. Are you done, Rob?
Sure.
Um, Deb, I was there, and even they got into with Mr. Quick. I think the engineers, I was there, okay, Brian was from the county was there, and, I mean, John can tell you, I'm, I'm very good friends with the chairman of the board of that, okay? I, I don't, I, I have no problem with you doing it if that's what you wanna do, but even him, their own chairman, is, you know, it was, we had to let the engineers work it out, and it got elevated so much that both of their attorney and our attorney got into it. Mr. Rosasco made some comments and things, so I, I, I don't know, and, and I was in the wastewater business. I know him. I did the plan up there. I know that. I don't think, Deb, that that's, I know all the people as well, but this is somebody like AJ. We, we have an engineer that works with them, that we have hired, and that's where.
I know David.
Okay, and, and they, that's where the problem came, okay, between the two engineers, okay? We can't, as a, as a council, you can or I can't, we can't, I couldn't voice my opinion, okay? You can voice your opinion, but it's gotta come back here for us to make a decision, so. Anyways, um, that, I just wanna throw my two cents in, cause it got very nasty that day with Mr. Quick, and their attorney had to jump in. Mr. Quick jumped in, and it was not a very nice, it wasn't, um.
It's just the sheer fact that it's been going on for so long, and the fact that I, I also know those, I, you, you were doing the building, and I was doing the approvals and stuff, uh, through council. Um, I just, I just think maybe I might be able to bring some calmness to it and listen, you know? We need to come together. Maybe not, maybe not. I don't wanna get into it with them. I want to resolve it. That's all.
Okay, go ahead, Rob?
How about if I check with AJ again on the status of that report? See where Ed from the Key Largo Wastewater District is at with respect to what their sense of agreement is, and report back. And if you believe that there is still a value in participating following us getting that way, and we're on the cusp of getting it, I mean, we're looking at, December thirteenth was the target I initially received from them, um, then we can make another call at that point, and, and I'd be, and I'll still follow up with Peter and say, hey, look, if we can't get this resolved very soon pursuant to that report.
I'll, I'll meet with you about, uh, a couple of other things that could be possibly going on.
Okay.
Okay.
Sound good?
Sound good, I guess.
Okay, so, we're good with that? Uh, John, do you have anything else for, um, for you, for village attorney communication? We're done?
Nope, good with me.
All right, then we're gonna move to general public comment. This is, uh, something that has to do with nothing on the tabs. So, Marnie, who do we have?
Okay, first up, we have Ty Harris.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Ty Harris. The law firm of Ty Harris, PA. One ten Plantation Shores Drive, Island Rana, Florida. Uh, two things. Thank you so much for the direction to staff to work on the food truck ordinance. One thing, when I heard restaurants being mentioned, I just wanna say that our code's very unique in that restaurants aren't defined by your kitchen facilities. It's defined by the way you serve food. So some food trucks may qualify as restaurants, and some food trucks wouldn't. It also struck me that we have food trucks all the time in Founder's Park, which is zone public, public, semi-public, and we allow them to do special event, but special event permits don't really give you authority to not follow the code. So we need to clean this up. I appreciate the direction, and I think we'll have an ordinance that everybody will be able to work with. Second, I know there's gonna be a lot of discussion about ROGO, and I'm not up, up here to say you should use two hundred and fifty ROGO units. That's absolutely not what I'm saying. What I'm trying to tell you is you wanna control as many as you can control, because if you only take a hundred and four point two five, it would be very naive to believe that the county won't take the ones that we don't take and just use them in the county. So just like with Island Silver and Spice, when the decision was made to buy that property, that decision was made because we were concerned about the thirteen thousand daily trips assigned to that location. And Henry Rosenthal sat right there and went, we need to control. It wasn't about use, it was about we need to control that. We think there's a, you know, traffic issues on, on that part of Upper Matacombe. By owning that property, we controlled those thirteen thousand trips. So the same rationale should be applied to this. Whether, how many we wanna use, use, but control as many as you can control. Don't let the county control them, because you're not gonna have another opportunity to do it. And with that, I really appreciate the opportunity to give my thoughts on both those subjects. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Marnie?
Next up is Van Cadenhead.
Good evening, counsel. That item was, of course, uh, Tab 10, and, uh, Mr. Harris was allowed to speak to it, and nobody interrupted him. So I, uh, I'm, if it was me, I would have been interrupted. I have here the communications from the people in the village about Tab 10, and I wanna talk about the specifics of Tab 10 when Tab 10 comes up. What I wanna talk to now is the method of, of conveying the thoughts of the village from both sides. Uh, you know, as Buddy likes to say, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, and, and it's true. Because, um, uh, I have, uh, th- these things, uh, start off, this message is from an untrusted sender. You have not previously corresponded with this sender. Report suspicious. Now, this, there's, there's dozens of these, and it, it all says the same thing, from an external sender, report suspicious. Uh, I have one here from Eddie Whitman. I mean, I went to high school in Coral Shores in the fifties with Eddie Whitman, and if he's an untrusted, uh, suspicious sender, then somebody is an invasive exotic that's, uh, that's making up, making this up. And, and I, I resent the fact that it's prejudicial, uh, at the, at the top of the, at the, you know, you've probably got it in your, in your, uh, uh, package. But it, 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 both sides are, are slagged, except for Brian Schmidt. Now, Brian Schmidt is a real estate agent, so that's pretty suspicious right there. If you ask me, he has a very long, uh, and in-depth, uh, presentation to you, and there's nothing at all about him being, uh, flagged in any way, or his report is not suspicious, and that he's obviously a trusted sender. Now, I got, uh, Barbara Pender, uh, Henry Pender's wife, wrote with, with Henry, which is Buddy's brother. And, uh, the report, it says, report suspicious. This message is from an untrusted sender. Now, to classify someone as an untrusted sender after he's lived in the town for his whole life, I just don't feel that's, that's proper. And I, and I resent it. I think it's prejudicial, and, and, uh, this is on both sides of the coin. I mean, you're doing this for the people that are pro-development, you're doing this for the people that are anti-development. And, and who makes that judgment? Who, who decides, uh, this, this to me smacks of fascism. I really don't like it at all. And I don't think it's American. I don't think it's, it should be proper.
Thank you, Van.
To, to keep doing this, so.
Thank you.
I'll see you on Tab 10, folks.
Thank you. No, you're not supposed to. I, I think it has to do with our computer system. I don't think it has anything to do. Yeah, do you mind, because I knew when he was saying it, it has nothing to do with the person. Has to do with the computer. I know.
This, any email that comes from outside of the village email will say.
This, any email that comes from outside of the village email will say that.
I know.
It's a standard cybersecurity thing now on all emails, because email is the way the bad guys get in. Somebody clicks something, so it's just an extra warning system. And it's part of our cybersecurity grants that we get from the state.
I knew that. But it's just, it's just so much fun letting, listening to Van with it.
Yeah. It's nothing that's, it's against anybody for any reason, it's just a standard, anybody that comes from non-Isla Marada email will get that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Deb, did you want to say something?
Well, the question, the question really arises is why are some of them flagged and others are not?
If you're in the address book of the person you're sending to, then it will not be flagged.
Okay.
So, if you're in the address book in Outlook, it won't be flagged. If you're not in the address book, it'll flag it. If it comes from IslaMaradaFL.us, it will not be flagged.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vince.
Thank you.
Ms. Marnie?
Next up is Roland Moore.
Roland Moore, Lower Matt. I want to give you a report, an update on Henry Rosenthal. For those in the room who may not know this sad story about Henry, who, of course, used to sit right here as our former councilman. Henry is, has had a terrible fall and has been in the hospital. I believe he's in Homestead, and I wanted to ask the council if they would be willing to send a note of sympathy to Henry after all he has done with us and let him know how much we in Isla Marada appreciate him and wish him to get well soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Roland. Can we do something like that, Rob?
Sure. We'll get that done. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Roland, for bringing that.
Thank you, Roland.
Appreciate it greatly.
Thank you.
Let Rob, you know, can we do something in the next day or so, please?
Just a simple get well card or something.
Understood.
Marnie?
Next is Reverend Bruce Havens.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you. I am Bruce Havens, pastor at Coral Isles Church, mile marker 90. I live just down the street on Ren Street. We're always looking for ways to serve the community as a church. One of my concerns that I was running into was seeing students from Coral Shores going down the highway and crossing over to get food and things during the day and after school and things like that. And nobody loves a roller dog more than me occasionally, but, you know, seeing them cross those roads can be kind of scary. And we've had a number of food trucks who have approached us trying to ask if they could use our property. So, I'm speaking in favor of developing an ordinance that defines what can and can't be done. We're excited to have the opportunity to serve the community, and the students from Coral Shores are already running across the street, very small street, Ren Street, to get a great taco. So, I hope that that works out and we can continue to serve them and serve the community in that way. So, hopefully you'll be able to work that out soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Marnie?
Okay. I may have this first name wrong, but Tamari Ruiz. I may have the last name wrong as well.
She's coming up, so you said it good enough.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tamari Ruiz. I'm the owner of Tacos Jalisco. I thank you for having me here tonight, and I would like to, on behalf of Tacos Jalisco, kindly request that the village adopt a food truck ordinance, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. She could have brought us some tacos. Marnie?
Next is Joe Wishmeyer.
Joe Wishmeyer, Plantation Key. Mayor and council members, it was very disappointing to see the direction of this new council at its very first meeting. After hearing all the campaign promises to get the public more included in all the decisions and to help protect our delicate ecosystem, the very first two things that were on the agenda were to try to make citizens representing associations and organizations more difficult to receive a mere two extra minutes at public comment by requesting written letters at every single meeting for approval. Really? Mr. Horton, I saw you especially speak for the full five minutes, and another item was revisiting future BPAS allocations, which was discussed and voted on by previous council. I am still challenging the legality of that despite Mr. Quick's explanation that it was a new council and did not have to follow the old rules that states it can only be brought by a council member who voted on the winning side. That would have been Mr. Pender or Mayor Mahoney. Also, the fact that Mr. Horton wasn't even yet to be put on the council, he was still not a council member and only an ordinary citizen. How can an ordinary citizen start getting agendas on the, on the calendar? Another campaign promise was to address vacation rentals. On Thursday, this item is on the agenda. It was also addressed by previous council members under the fronting of US1, and we don't want to get into that again because that was a whole nother discussion. It was voted on and denied. Were all the campaign promises just lip service to try to get votes, or will you stand up for what you have pledged? Instead of revisiting agenda items discussed and voted on by previous councils, maybe you should concentrate on existing issues like village-owned properties, the fills, development of a strategic plan, before you start asking for more and more permits, traffic, sewer, workforce housing, TDC funding, legislative priorities. There's lots of things that'll keep you very busy, just to name a few. Plenty of work for you to do before worrying about what previous council has done and more development. This is only your second meeting, and most of all, we have heard about this, is permits, TDRs, vacation rentals, work towards representing our good quality of life and quiet enjoyment of life. The last thing I would like to bring up was it was very disturbing how a staff member can overrule 5.0 votes twice by the council. I hope that is looked into and we find out what happened.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Marnie?
Next up is Alina Davis.
Alina Davis, Plantation Key. Congratulations to the new council. I appreciate your time and all your efforts in this next two years, and I also want to congratulate Mr. Cole on the much more congenial atmosphere of the village council meetings since his hiring as village manager. I appreciate it. After watching the November village council meeting, I do have some questions. This is not about the discussion of how many Rogo units the village wants. This is about why it's on the agenda after the previous council had already made the decision. I would like to know if Mr. Horton went to staff and asked it to be put on the agenda prior to being seated as a council member. Is this against protocol? We need to adhere to the process that is in place. No special favors should be allowed. Our government needs to operate in the sunshine. This leads me to an item that Councilman Friedman mentioned a couple of months ago regarding Mr. Yates and the change in the health insurance policies of village staff without village council being informed or voting on this matter. Everything should be discussed openly so that there is never a semblance of impropriety. Only then can our village council truly represent all the residents of Isla Marada. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Marnie?
There's no one else? Thank you.
Okay. Public comment is now closed. All right. I believe this, did you want to say something? Okay. Consent agenda?
Yes. We are in the consent portion of the agenda. These items are of routine nature, and council members have reviewed these items in advance and sought the advice of staff as they felt necessary. There'll be one vote on the consent items, which today are items Tab 4 through 8. If anyone would like to pull an item from consent here, she should state so now.
Council? Anybody?
Yep.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
And we will have to have public comment before the vote, though.
Okay. So, we'll go ahead and open public comment. Marnie?
Mr. Wishmeyer would like to speak.
Come on up.
Yes, Joe Wishmeyer, Plantation Key. First of all, I would like to thank this council for resurfacing of the pickleball and basketball courts. While we appreciate this long overdue improvement, I would like to emphasize how crowded the three pickleboards pickleball courts get. You can even hear them out there now. I hope that pickleball lines would also be included on the basketball court as they are now, even though they are very difficult to use, especially if there's any wind whatsoever, sharing with the Montessori schools and dealing with hitting the balls into the traffic. It was discussed to put pickleball lines on some of the tennis courts. This was started and then abandoned. I don't know why. I rarely see the tennis courts near full, whereas the pickleball courts, especially in the morning, are overflowing. Maybe take attendance for pickleball and tennis courts to see which gets the most use and then take the appropriate action, or just add more pickleball courts. Upper Matacombe and Key Largo courts are always busy, and this would be as well. So, I would hope that you would reconsider at least lining the tennis courts so that we have more pickleball courts available. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, Marnie?
No, except that Mr. Rafanello wanted to speak on the last item and I had mistaken another item that he wanted to speak on.
And that was my fault. My writing was vague. My name's Tom Rafanello. I'm a resident of Isla Marada. I welcome the new council and I wish you guys the best of luck. I am the president of the Isla Marada Community Alliance and have been for the last year and a half. You might not recognize me because I left the horns and the tail at home, but the Isla Marada Community Alliance. Our mission is to inform and educate our residents to all the events and issues in Isla Marada, and we do that through the newsletter, which has over 3,000 readers at this point. Try it and you'll like it. Take a look at it. Very informative, and it says a lot of different things. Some people, you know, I've heard different things about the ICA, and if anybody's got a complaint about it, you can see me here, you could see me at home, you could pick out a spot of your own liking, but if you got some, if you got a complaint, be man or woman enough to tell me to my face, and we'll go from there. I don't play those games with you guys. If I got something to say to you, I say it, and I like the same respect. The newsletter is something that I think everybody should read because there are really good things about events here and the issues, and we sometimes, believe it or not, don't agree with the decisions that you make, but dissent is the founding block of this country, and you'll continue, we will continue to dissent if you make bad decisions, decisions we don't agree with. I want to commend Alina Davis and Joe because they said a lot of things I was going to say. There's a lot of things that go on where we lose confidence in how you operate when you're doing things and getting favoritism, getting something on the agenda when you're not even on the council. You know, that's kiddy stuff, and some of the other things that go on, don't do it. You got a really fresh start here. I don't care what you did in the past. You made some mistakes. Some of you have been on council, you're almost on your second decade. You need to get it down, and we need to work at this. You know, you know what we don't know? We don't know who has a legitimate takings claim. We've asked for numbers, don't get much on it. We need to find out. If you know, share it, because we're making decisions on Rogos that are going to create false claims, and to go from the 104 to 250 is an insulting thing to do to the residents of Isla Marada. Every survey that's taken, every interview that I did, and I spoke to hundreds of people, not one person said they wanted more development. They wanted a better way to live, and they wanted things, calm down here, some balance, redevelopment. And if all you ran on it, you know, show me the money, then you got to do it. Those types of things, those 250 Rogos will eventually penalize the village. It'll create claims we shouldn't have to have. And again, I'll say it again, how many legitimate takings claims do we have now? We've got staffs. We've been talking about this since Hector was a pup. Somebody needs to do something about it. Bad decisions, you know, sometimes you make bad decisions. We made bad decision years back about converting over 200 affordable housings to market. Yet, we don't want to make bad decisions like that again. This is very important time for Isla Marada. Put your commercial hat off and put your public servant hat on and take care of the residents. Take a look at that board anytime you're not sure about what you want to do, because that's what you swore to oppose, uphold. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tom. Marnie, anybody else?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
I have one thing, just to, back to the consent agreement, just a quick statement that Mr. Wishmeyer reminded me that, you know, we have a major park plan that's coming around, we're having workshops, so some of your suggestions, they can be used for how those courts might be used or utilized in the future, the whole park. So, I think you touching on that was a good reminder that we still are in that process where we can make some, some of those better changes.
Okay. Thank you very much, and public comment is now closed. I had a motion and a second. Marnie, do you want to call the roll?
Could you please refresh me on who made the motion?
I made the motion.
I second it.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Deb Gillis?
Yes.
Councilmember Buddy Pender?
Yes.
Councilmember Steve Friedman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Don Horton?
Yes.
And Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
That motion passes five to zero.
Okay. All right. That brings us to Tab 9.
Yes. Tab 9 is a resolution of the Village Council of Isla Marada Village of Islands, Florida, approving and adopting the village's land acquisition action plan and providing for an effective date.
Okay. Peter, if you want to come on up?
Good evening, Council. So, the village's comprehensive plan does state that the village should maintain a land acquisition action plan, which is to be developed by the Land Acquisition Citizens' Advisory Committee in collaboration with the village staff. So, this action plan, it's intended to give guidance to the village council, it's intended to give recommendations to the village council on practices for the purchase or the acquisition of private vacant parcels within the village, while also retiring development rights and protecting the private property of those property owners. So, that has been completed, it has been drafted, that's what you have before you this evening. Again, reiterate, that is a draft, and it's just offered to give guidance to the council. There are some other things within this action plan other than just the steps and the framework for acquiring land, some supplemental information, including the village's current acquisition list that was developed by staff and the committee. It has already been approved by the village council, the former village council. That list contains about 70 parcels containing desirable upland habitat. So, again, in our comprehensive plan, we are required to maintain this list. Again, it's been approved by the village council, it's also been transmitted to the Monroe County Land Authority, whom we now have an interlocal agreement with, so the land authority has our list. They are searching the MLS, Multiple Listing Service, routinely to see if any of these properties come up for sale, because of course, that would just be a willing seller program. So, that list does also contain the properties that are on the Florida Forever list within the village. The action plan also contains a list of all of the publicly owned property in the village that's already been acquired. Majority of that is owned by the village and the state. The state owns quite a bit of property in the village. So, also in that action plan is a list of additional properties we would like to see added to the Florida Forever list. So, the committee, along with village staff, have been analyzing properties in the village, and we're going to suggest to the state to add some properties onto this list. The property owners would have to agree, though, just to let, you know, they have to agree to allow their properties to put on this list. I had some questions about that. There also is a quick description of the village's partnership with the Monroe County Land Authority in that action plan. Again, we do an interlocal agreement with the county, Monroe County Land Authority. They act as the agent for the village during any acquisition. It's extremely beneficial to the village, both time-wise and financially. It's extremely beneficial to the village, both time-wise and financially. And finally, there's also all the listings of the comprehensive plan policies regarding land acquisition is also in the action plan. So again, this is just meant to be guidance. There is absolutely nothing that bounds the council to any type of land acquisition by approving this document. It is absolutely open to editing, to comments, suggestions, that's why we're bringing it before you now, you know, we're looking for that. If you all think it's perfect as it is, you know, we are looking for an approval and adoption of the action plan tonight. And any questions, concerns, we can address them now or at a later time.
Well, first, I want to tell you, you did a phenomenal job, very detailed, very good. So I thank you for the effort you put into this.
Okay, thank you. We'll also thank Rebecca Jutan, the land use consultant, who also assisted with this in conjunction with the committee.
Counsel, any questions?
So, so Peter, what about like the turtle, you know, the hammock down there, the turtle property? Okay, that's FCT, right? Florida Communities Trust?
Correct.
Do we have property still in here that we could get, you know, because they buy property all over the state, and then, like us, we manage it.
Sure. So the FCT is still an active, Florida Communities Trust program is still an active program with the state in their land acquisition program. So it's something we're thinking about. We actually have been discussing a possible proposal for a property on Lower Matacombe with FCT funds. It's, only comes up once a year, the application process, so we missed it for this year. It's a lengthy application process. We've done it before. We tried to acquire that property on Sunshine Boulevard with FCT funds were denied, but that's certainly an option, yes.
Okay. Because I know they got a lot of money. I mean, I heard something the other day, and that, you know, they got a lot of money, and if it's a good cause, a good thing, the money's there, so.
There is a recreation component with the FCT, too, so conservation, recreation.
For the public, right, like the turtle. They got to be open, and yeah.
Right.
Yep.
Don, do you have a question?
Peter, thank you.
Sure.
Great document, but a couple of things that I kind of wanted to go over. First off, you, under the budget impact, you say that there's no budget impact associated with the adoptionist resolution, but at the same time, land, acquiring land and maintaining public land, there is a budget impact in the long run. So perhaps this ought to say that there's no immediate budget impact, but at the same time, there is ultimately going to be a budget impact on the taxpayers of Isla Marada. It may just be maintaining the land, it may be making sure that no invasive exotics are growing on the land and going and visiting. I know you do that all the time, but we still have contracts with maintenance contractors that actually we pay out of our taxpayers' monies to do that, right? So there is a budget impact, it's just not an immediate budget impact, right?
Agreed. Any type of land acquisition with management are going to come fees, costs, some type of budget impact, so that is true. With the wording in this council communication, this is just approval of the plan, it's a requirement in our comprehensive plan, so we are fulfilling an obligation within the plan. This was a direction we got from the previous council, so I see where you're coming from. You know, if land were to be acquired, there would be a budget impact, but with the approval of this plan, there's no immediate budget impact. That's correct.
Right, okay. Also, in the, I guess the fifth whereas, you've got that we'll continue coordinate with regional, state, federal, and private not-for-profit programs, but we also need to coordinate with the taxpayers as the stakeholders in Isla Marada, right?
That's a good point. We will include that in the resolution, if you like.
Also, I was looking at, on here, lots to look at, page 38, starting on 38 of the report.
We could pull this open if there's going to be, pull this up, if there's going to be an open discussion on this. We are somewhat prepared, I believe, that if council wants to pull it up.
It's pretty simple.
Okay, just wanted to mention that. We don't have to bring it up if we need to look at it.
When we, when we're going here and we're talking about the potential of no budget impact, but we start on page 38 of the financing outright acquisition, and in 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 of these items that are listed in here, I see the word tax, and it scares me when I start seeing the word tax, because that's the taxpayers of Isla Marada, right, that may be impacted. So that just brings us back to there could be some impact on the citizens of Isla Marada.
That's a good point. I will note, though, that, again, it's in our comprehensive plan that, within this plan, we explore taxes. That's why there's that wording of exploring taxes, that's the direction in that comprehensive plan, but understood.
May I add on to that?
Also, let me finish it, again, then you just jump right in there. So also, there was a study done in 2018, and that study identified 25, the upper area, the middle area, and the lower area of Isla Marada, and it identified 25 pieces of property that was in a, you know, conservation priorities, in a high priority, and we ended up with more, and I noticed that some of those properties that were on there were actually developed properties. There was some development. There was one in Lower Matacombe that's immediately adjacent to a residential unit. It has a cleared beach area, it's scarified in certain areas, and it would, it has a dock on it, a pile-supported marginal dock. So that's not something that we'd want to acquire necessarily, but it's something that maybe would, we would seek to get Florida, be it on the Florida forever, is that what the idea is?
Sure, that's a possibility, and there should not be any developed properties on that list in terms of structures, a dock. The committee staff felt that that did not necessitate development to the point that we still wouldn't try to acquire it.
Even with the building that's on the beach as well?
I didn't know of a building, I don't know what type of build. If there's a new structure or a building on a property, it's new, we'll evaluate that and update the list. So we're going to update this list every year, but if there is one, maybe you could, you could touch base and let me know which property has a building on it now.
All right. That's, yeah, okay.
Well, I was just, I was just going to make a comment about the taxes here. Several of the taxes are not additional taxes, they're existing taxes, like tourism development tax and the gas tax. Those are already in existence taxes, and it's just how the funds could be utilized, correct?
That's right, and yes, that's absolutely true. The county does utilize the HAPSENT tourist impact tax for land acquisition, and they also designate the local infrastructure sales surtax for land acquisition.
But the forms of taxation for exemptions and the ad lorum taxes and the title transfer taxes and the excise taxes are not, so, yeah, there's.
There's a combination of both, you're right.
When there's a document that has seven things that say taxes, we need to pay attention to that.
But Peter, for the general public, I mean, I think they all know, when we buy something, it actually comes off the tax roll, so it does, you know, it's not, nobody's paying taxes on that anymore, so it, in essence, it does raise the taxes, because you're not, you don't have as many people paying into the tax roll, but anyway.
Sure. I think we're doing, I mean, what you're doing as far as trying to find ways to acquire taxes or property and take them off of the rolls, it's just like what was said earlier in public comment, it helps get those away from the potential takings claims, and we need, I mean, we've got, what do we have, about 17, what do we have, 1,700 acres or something like that of land?
That's correct. Just look a little under, yep.
1,700 that we, that Isla Marada itself is.
Right.
It's either state, local, or feds. Right. Awesome.
Steve, do you want to say anything? Okay, anybody else, council? No? Thank you very much, Peter.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Peter.
We'll go ahead and open public comment.
I don't have anyone signed up for this.
Okay, so then, council, do we hear a motion?
I'd like for it to come back with some of those modifications on the wherés and in the report.
Well, they make that part of your resolution.
Can we do that, Peter? Would you be comfortable with that, or would you rather?
Do you want to suggest changes?
It would be difficult to enumerate them right now, so.
I have the change noted about the resolution. Are there other change, if there's other changes that want to be made within the plan itself, certainly we can change them and bring this, bring a revised draft back.
I think that'll work, that's good enough for now, that's fine.
The change to the resolution?
Yes, sir. So I make a motion to accept this, and can we change that resolution at this point?
Yeah, it would be a motion to approve the resolution with the addition of language in the fifth whereas clause to include village stakeholders.
Thank you, yes.
Okay.
I'd make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Marnie, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Don Horton?
Yes.
Councilmember Deb Gillis?
Yes.
Councilmember Steve Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Buddy Pinder?
Yes.
And Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero.
Okay, moving on to Tab 10.
Tab 10 is a resolution of the Village Council of Isla Marada Village of Islands, Florida, providing a recommendation of the Monroe County Board of County Commissioners regarding the number of additional residential building permit allocations the village would like to receive and potential future allocations. Repeating Resolution Number 24-10-122, providing for transmission of this resolution to certain people within the county.
Ms. Jennifer, is this you?
Technically, but I don't really have anything new to add. You know, you had asked for this to be moved to this evening's meeting. The only thing I'll note that I know of last time is that we have to get an answer back to the county by tomorrow, so if there's a decision to be made, it needs to be made this evening.
Should we go ahead and open public comment before the council has a discussion?
Sure.
Thanks. Marnie, would you open public comment?
Sure. First up is Van Caden.
Well, we get to put the cart before the horse again. I would like to hear the reasons that you think 250 is better than 104.25 or whatever that was decided by the previous council. Now, everybody in the village breathed a sigh of relief when we went down from 250, which was recommended by the planning department, and there were a whole lot of reasons why they came up with 250, and a lot of the information that they used to come up with that number was proved to be fallacious, was proved to be dust in the wind, was proved to be not sustainable as a concrete fact. And the other council spent hours coming up with 104, and as been pointed out by a couple of previous speakers earlier, Mr. Horton, before he was even seated as a councilman, influenced the putting, the rehearing of this and rescinding the previous resolution, and you people gave him the waiver that it takes legally to discuss it within a six-month period. In other words, the people of Isla Marada were expecting to have at least six months of breathing room, and Mr. Horton, being the Concrete Coalition spokesperson, has decided that we need the 250, and, oh, well, we're not going to use the 250, we just want to have the control of the 250. Well, listen, you got three out of five. You're going to find a way to use all 250, or for leverage or for whatever you're going to use them for. And I think 104 was decided on as a reasonable number, and over a 12 and a half year period, and all the stipulations that were made and the arguments that were made have just blown into the wind. It just, like the people that made those decisions were stupid, and that's not right. The Concrete Coalition should not be driving the bus that drives Isla Marada into hell, because that's what's happening. We're getting too much traffic, we're getting too much strain on the infrastructure, we have dead reefs, we have no fish, we have, the situation is not in keeping with our mission statement, as Mr. Raffinello pointed to on the wall. No, it's to, you want to increase the hurricane evacuation time, you want to move the goalposts to allow this more construction, and it's just reprehensible. I mean, it's just a stab in the back, a spit in the face, behind-the-scenes maneuvering. Thank you very much, and I read all those comments earlier, or, you know, I referenced all those comments earlier, and a lot of people are really, really not happy with this rescinding the previous recommendation, just on the basis of the Concrete Coalition. Thank you.
Marnie?
Next up is Rick Barato.
Good afternoon. My name is Rick Barato, I live in Tavonier, mile marker 93. The president of the Tavonier Community Association and a member of the Florida Keys ROGO Coalition. Our coalition has spent a lot of time and effort throughout Monroe County providing input and analysis on the ROGO issue. As I speak to you here today, some of my colleagues are in Marathon speaking to that council on the very same topic. On Saturday, the coalition staff forwarded to each of you a letter with comments on the vacant parcel analysis by your village staff. I'd rather not articulate all of those thoughts, but request as an alternative that you enter our letter into your record of this meeting today. I've given the clerk a copy earlier, and I can provide anybody else that wants one with one as well. I would also ask, if it has not been done, that your planning director address the points that are in our letter. You and the public you represent deserve to know this information and understand it while formulating your decision to ask for more ROGO allocations. I think it's incredibly important, and Van Caden had said it, that we all recognize that our environment is not without limits. We should all be very concerned about the effects of future development. The impact of previous developments can be seen in our nearshore waters, the quality of our reefs, congestion, and the advance on our infrastructure. We all need to work together to bring common sense solutions to the table. The staff's request of at least 250 allocations, which is in addition to the 26 you have remaining from the 2012 allocation, is in excess of 232 buildable lots in their analysis, so it makes no sense. To a large extent, we believe this request is built around the underlying assumption that the village could potentially lose all takings claims that could be made by the owners of these properties. That simply is not true, and I think all of you know it. Many of these lots were purchased after the adoption of the ROGO system in 1992, and quite a few were purchased after the 2012 allotment. Additionally, a number of the lots on the village's list are in zoning districts that permit commercial uses. These lots present very little chance, if any, that a takings claim will succeed. The county agreed with that analysis and eliminated all commercially zoned lots from its buildable lots list. The village should do the same. There are additional reasons that some of these lots should be removed from the buildable list, and that information is in our letter. And to give you an example, you heard earlier here, Mr. Dully and Mr. Fries talk about the Florida Forever program. We identified 24 properties that are on your list for Forever Florida Acquisition that are also on your buildable list, and you heard Mr. Dully say, these are lots that have, people have no intention at all of developing, so why would they be on your list of buildable lots? In closing, we ask that you reject the staff request for 250 additional allocations. It is based on false assumptions. We ask that you consider the information we have provided and remove those lots that simply do not belong on the list of buildable lots. You should approve a more realistic number that aligns with the village's true need. Lastly, we suggest the commission specify that whatever number you arrive at, that that number be reduced by any of the allocations you receive from the 220 already requested based on the 2023 evacuation model. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you. Marnie?
Next up is Captain Ed Davison.
For the record, I am Captain Ed Davison, chairman of the Florida Keys Citizens Coalition, founded over 40 years ago, during which period, for many years, Mr. Horton. founded over 40 years ago, during which period for many years, Mr. Horton, I've been honored with five-minute speech time. I'd like to know how many minutes I have to convey public issues in this forum today.
Four, four minutes and 34. So you have the five.
Rogo numbers are being sought as though there were no consequences. But there are dire impacts that are being deliberately ignored, for obvious economic reasons. I have here a sworn deposition under oath by the state's leading evacuation expert with 25 years at the Regional Planning Council. This testimony occurred in the Florida Keys during the challenge, the citizens' challenge to the 1,300 extra Rogo permits that Governor Scott granted while he was in the process of running for Senate. This dude is Richard Ogborne. Be happy to provide this court transcript to any of you who need some interesting reading. I'm just going to quote you some verbatim statements. Here's the first one. "My first assignment, Mr. Ogborne, as a regional planning council, was to coordinate the review of the Monroe County Comprehensive Plan, which I did for the full 25 years I was with the council. I was involved in comprehensive plan review, not only for Monroe County, but for other jurisdictions in the South Florida region." Again, quotes, "All of the results of the 2010 study included the estimated clearance times for Monroe County that were based on Monroe participating in a regional evacuation." My own editorial comment, Monroe County is the only county out of 67 in the state that has a illusory single-county evacuation model. Everybody else has dual or triple multiple-adjacent-county evacuations, which is the realism. We pretend that while we're all fleeing for our lives from a century-class hurricane, that when we get to Homestead, the roads are empty, literally empty. Not a single person from Homestead to West Palm Beach is counted in the single-county evacuation model, which he objected to under oath. Monroe County model runs at some level represent an artificial run," direct quote, "because they essentially are Monroe County-only evacuation. In the statewide regional evacuation study program, all of our planning scenarios were regional scenarios. That means not just one county was evacuating. The Monroe County runs we did were Monroe County-only runs, which means basically there's no interference encountered by Miami-Dade County. Miami-Dade County evacuates when Monroe County reaches the continent." And that is not a realistic assumption, but it is the one that was used by the department and the county. And then he was asked directly by the lawyer, "And is any of the traffic from Dade County included in the calculation of the Monroe County clearance time?" The answer, no. Then he was asked, "How long would it take to evacuate the Florida Keys if you consider the traffic those evacuees will encounter before they hit the entrance to the Florida Turnpike?" His answer, "My recollection is that the 2014 update we did, we were looking at regional clearance times in the neighborhood of the high 30s." I think that probably means 37 or 38 hours. And that follow-on statement, again, verbatim, "There are additional factors that are not accounted for in the main evacuation scenario. The high vacancy rate that is used in that scenario, under today's activities with vacation rentals and Airbnb use, it's reasonable to assume there is a larger number of people occupying what were considered vacant units in the model." That's sworn testimony under oath by the state's leading evacuation model, the guy that ran all the key stuff from the beginning for 25 years. We then retain his successor, and he said the same things, and estimated the updated evacuation time is in 39 to 49 hours. And the county, in fact, has a regional-
You've gone over your five minutes.
The county has a regional that they don't talk about.
Thank you.
It's 43.25 hours. These are illegal, and you have some liabilities.
Thank you. Marnie?
Next up is Tom Raffinella.
Do I get to go again? What I was going to speak to, and I appreciate what Captain Ed said and what Rich said, but it's a tremendous responsibility. And if we don't do this correctly, there could be tragedy here, because your first responsibility is the safety of your residents. And not giving them a viable evacuation plan has some liability to it. It's something that you go right to the top of your list. As far as the development goes, redevelopment is the key. You take 250 more, you're going to create a problem that the taxpayers are going to pay for, and so would the residents, and so is the lifestyle here. So take this seriously and think about what you're supposed to do. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Marnie?
Next up is Joe Wishmeyer.
Yes, Joe Wishmeyer, Plantation Key. "Again, I would like to renew my objections to the legality about even rehearing this, about the B-Pass allocations. I think that should be addressed before anything else. I don't understand why this is such a priority, since the previous council heard and voted on 104.75 permits. With the land acquisition plan, including the purchase of lands to remove them from the possible development and other studies done about takings from development lots, more are not needed at this time. 300 early evacuation units, 40 new county permits, 104.75 permits that we did request, plus the additional permits that we still have are more than enough. The plan developed 20 years ago said that buildout would be reached when the current permits are gone. What happened? Did Isla Marada all of a sudden grow and get more land? With almost 350 new permits, why should we request more? In the future, if more are needed, then apply for them then. I also remember when Pete Bachelor was elected to council, he was a consultant and represented many people in getting permits. So that there would be no conflict of interest, he relinquished all of his clients. I believe that Mr. Horton has spoken in the past many, many times about the exact same thing. So maybe he should either consider doing the same thing, or at least maybe recuse himself from any votes concerning permits or development. Doing this would eliminate any conflict regarding personal gain for him or his clients, which is illegal while sitting on council. Any council members with such backgrounds, many possible TVR, TDRs, or other development rights should be recused. Please put these issues to rest and concentrate on campaign promises to protect our environment and control development. Look at and remember our village statement to protect our quality of life and quiet enjoyment of life. You were elected to protect these. I am sorry to sound so negative, but these issues are very personal and important to me and many, many other citizens. Please make sure you keep us in mind." Thank you.
Thank you. Marnie?
Next is Joan Fulmer.
I'm Joan Fulmer. I'm a resident of Isla Marada, actually, for 42 years now. And first, I want to thank the council for serving it as a sacrifice, providing we're fulfilling that mission that's on the wall. I also want to thank everyone who's tuning in, spending their time here. I do care about the quality of life. That's why I'm still here. I came for a visit, and I forgot to go home. And this is home for me. My whole adult life has been spent here. And I don't need to repeat all the great reasons for conserving our properties. I see no reason at all to reverse the previous council's decision to keep the B-Passes at 104. something or other. No reason at all. There are a lot of educated people who have researched this. The cards are on the table. Thank you for your consideration. I speak not just for myself, but many residents, long-term, of this community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Marnie?
Next is Sue Miller.
Sue Miller, speaking for the Isla Marada Community Alliance. "I am disappointed that you didn't trust the efforts of the prior council. Did you see the results of the numerous surveys? Did you see the numbers and the facts that were diligently researched? You surely know what residents think. Yes, there are businesses that will always believe more is better for their profits, but what about the residents you represent? Why did the village and the county work so hard to give the residents a voice? Don't ignore the goals of our comp plan. We have numerous reasons to limit growth. Our carrying capacity overload, our environment that is struggling horribly, our evacuation numbers intended to protect us, the day-to-day traffic, nighttime noise that impacts our quality of life. Nowhere in our comp plan is the cost of takings a parameter for establishing growth limits. The staff did an analysis of buildable lots, and the prior council determined how many would likely have a valid takings claim. Very few. They even exaggerated the number to get to 104.75 for their magic request number. Our comp plan provided a TDR process that was specifically intended," and I quote, "to redistribute existing residential units to achieve planned densities and retire development rights without increasing the overall amount of development. You now suggest every vacant lot should get a B-Pass allocation, eliminating the value of every TDR in the village? Some of you are suggesting there should be more allocations than there are vacant buildable lots, just in case? Based on what? A fear without facts to back it up? Scare tactics outrageously, that will be outrageously expensive to taxpayers? What is outrageously expensive to taxpayers is the existing cost of living here and the future infrastructure improvements that will be needed. A new pipeline will take years at $10 million per mile, reverse osmosis and desalinization plants, because South Florida aquifer is not adequate for all the huge population growth of not only Monroe County, but Miami and Broward County and Palm Beach as well. The cost of providing a workforce for the most basic of services, cost of educating our youth, buying a $2.75 million property in the heart of town, a $4 million church, a $1.8 million Machado property, taking them off the tax rolls and letting them sit idle, the cost of a dying environment that has been the major draw for past and future generations of residents, and the major draw for our critical tourist industry. You all may say that you were elected by a significant majority, but who among you made it clear that you would not support this type of additional growth without facts needed to support it? Why is more okay? It is not. Thank you."
Thank you, Sue. Marnie?
Next up is Harold Dalton.
Good evening, council. Thank you all very much for your service and your time. Somebody up here needs to speak up for the rights of property owners. Now, I don't have a dog in this fight. I don't own any vacant lots, okay? I own my house in Upper Matt and throw of it. And I love living here. I love the people. I love the quality of life. But I can tell you, if I owned a vacant lot, and I've got special interests and people coming in from outside of our community, trying to tell me that I can't build on it, you know what? I'm going to sue you. And I'm going to sue you for everything you're worth, okay? It's not right. But let's look at some statistics here. According to what I was able to find online, there are 6,511 taxable properties. We are talking about building on 250 vacant, okay? That's 96.2% is already built. We talk about infrastructure. Do you really think that the infrastructure we have can't handle 3.8% more? I'll guarantee I've already talked to the electric company. They can easily. Our sewer system, yes, we have problems. That's being addressed, and the water is already being dealt with. It is the taxpayers here, not necessarily the voters, but the taxpayers here that are going to pay for the consequences of your decisions. And we, as far as I'm concerned, the village should control as many B-Pass units as they can, for the simple reason that if we don't control it, guess what, guys? The county is going to take them. All right? They're going to go somewhere. So, again, for the taxpayers of this community, please, get as many B-Pass units as you can get, control them. You don't have to use them, or you can dole them out over 50 years. But get them and control them. Thank you.
Marnie?
There's no one else.
Okay. Public comment is now closed. Counsel? She said no. All right. Counsel, who wants to start?
Help yourself?
No.
I'll start. I think Dr. Dalton summed up many things that I wanted to say. This is about taxes. It's about property rights. It's about takings. It's not about, it's not about building. We, as a, we as a council, we as a community, can make a decision that is logical on how many permits we issue per quarter and how many permits we issue per year. And we're in the middle of rewriting our comprehensive plan. And that comprehensive plan, with the cooperation of all of the community, everyone in our town, not, not people from Sugarloaf, or Summerland, or Key Largo, or Big Pine Key, but people that live in Isla Marada, have a chance at making that decision. I do believe that the last council made a mistake. And I think that maybe there just wasn't enough thought that night to come to a decision on what could actually happen. And I've told you in another meeting of two takings claims, but there are actually more that has happened in Isla Marada that has come to light since that first night. So for somebody to get up at this podium and say, takings claims are not going to happen, we, we settled. The outcome of those settlements maybe sometimes aren't thoroughly explained. And everybody thinks that this all went away. But we've had takings claims at a local hotel. And maybe there's a different word for it than takings. Maybe it's another legal term, John, rather than a Burt Harris Act. There's other forms of takings-type claims. But they happened in a hotel that resulted in the hotel being able to, in a settlement, expand exponentially in numbers of units. It happened at Seabreeze, and there was a settlement that happened out of that. It happened at- It happened at the Glenn property. It happened at the Sojourn property. And it goes on and on. So, it's not a matter of, "Let's build more." And I can, you know, I guess people can throw words like Concrete Coalition at me, and it doesn't bother me. I've made my living hard and honest in this town as a home builder. And without being a home builder, lots of people wouldn't have homes. And I don't think I've had one person that's not my friend by the time I ended up finishing building their home. And I'm proud of that. So, you can throw the words at me as much as you want, but it's not going to matter, because I know my honesty and my integrity. I know that I care about the people in Alamo Rata. I came here on vacation 47 years ago, and I haven't left, just like Joni said. I didn't want to go back anywhere. I quit fighting oil fires in Texas, and I came here and I went back to building houses. It's about taxes. It's about property rights. It's about takings claims. And for somebody to stand up here and say, "Takings claims aren't going to happen," is silly. So, what I'm thinking about, what I'm hoping that we do, is we ask for as many as it would be satisfactory to this council and to the citizens. I do not think 104 is a rational amount, a reasonable amount. And maybe 250 is way too much, but that's what our planning director had suggested. But to not have those in our bank, so to speak, or as an insurance policy, if we are allowed to get them, is absolutely foolish, because we will not have anything to negotiate with when it comes to takings claims. And all the innuendo and speculation and hyperbole that wants to be thrown out there, the fact of the matter is, nobody, I haven't heard one report when somebody wanted to evacuate that they couldn't. I haven't heard respected industries like Moat Marine or Eye Care who are top of the line when it comes to our coral infrastructure down here say that building single-family houses is the reason for killing the reef. I have heard them say, time and time again, that it's because our offshore waters are heating up. It's because we have coral bleaching diseases. It's not because somebody has built a house. Now, could you say that somebody built a house and went out there and did something stupid on the reef? Yeah, but that's going to happen. But it's not because we had a bank of houses that we could stop takings claims. I hear about all of the destruction and damage to our near-shore waters, but I will tell you, if you talk to the scientists, even talk to Peter, with the work that we're doing in Alamo Rata, all we're doing is improving our near-shore waters. On a daily basis, we work as hard as we can, and we need to do that. We're filling canals. We're putting in culverts. We're making flow through. We're monitoring and checking the benthos and the seagrasses in those canals that we're filling in, and we're seeing wonderful things happen. What we're doing today is cleaning up the sins of the past. Back in the day, when you thought it was okay to just dig a hole and put in a cesspit, or when your septic tank started backing out, you beat out the bottom of your septic tank so that it didn't overflow the next time. What we're doing is cleaning up the sins of the past when they thought it was okay to dig canals 25 feet deep when the entrance to that canal was four feet deep. And we're working on that on a daily basis. We have gone to extreme heights trying to take care of our near-shore waters with stormwater management plans on these postage-sized amp lots where we make people put in stormwater retention on their property. We do require restoration plans when plants are removed. We do require payment in lieu of when they can't plant more plants on their property. So, we continue to improve our environment. And these things that are being thrown out about, "We don't care because of all that," is actually just not fact. It is not fact that our infrastructure is strained when we have our own aqueduct, when we have our own F K E C, when we have the Key Largo Wastewater Authority telling us, "We don't have a problem if you were to have more. We don't have a problem." So, my recommendation is to have an insurance policy. I am not saying use them all. I'm saying, as a community, we decide how we're going to use them. I am telling you that if we put it in our comprehensive plan that we can only issue four permits a quarter for the next 40 years, I'm good with that. I'm great with that. I think that's, as a community, that's what we need to do. But I haven't heard any of these groups that are on this list here say that they're willing to start paying our taxes in Alamo Rata when we start losing takings claims. And maybe we win takings claims. And maybe that's a six-figure. I mean, what do we always say when two people are fighting? Who's the winner? It's the attorneys. So, you're going to have one attorney saying that they're going to beat us, and you're going to have another attorney that say they're going to defend us. And we've got great attorneys. There's no doubt about it. But they don't come free. And they're not going to work for us for free, and I wouldn't expect them to. So, I look at this as an insurance policy. I look at it as money in the bank, and I am not the one to say we should spend it all. I'm saying that the community should make that decision. And then there's the argument of, "Well, we don't trust future councils." Well, I'll tell you that if we lock it into our comprehensive plan, it has to go through at least a year, if not more, of public hearings to be able to change something like what we would be changing if we tried to change the amount of allocations. And I would tell you that there's no doubt about it under the area of state-critical concern. Once, as a community, we lock ourselves into a certain number per quarter, per year, there is no way the state is going to let us increase that number. It would have to go in front of the South Florida Regional Planning Council. It would have to go in front of the community at least three, if not four, times in public hearings for another council to be able to change something that big. And then, the state would have to review it. And the DOC, or whatever they call the DOE, whatever they call themselves now, I still call them the DCA. And they've always been the DCA to me. Those guys are not going to let us just change our minds. So, that's another, it's hyperbole. It is just not fact-driven. And people that say those things are saying them because they do not understand that entire process. So, I believe that the wise thing for us to do is to simply ask for more permits. And as a community, we decide how it locks into our comprehensive plan and how many we issue. I'm not saying build them all. I don't want to do that. I want us to be active with Peter, and I want us to get to the county, and I want us to find people in the state that will give us the money. But just as I said on that last tab, when it starts buying property and it's coming on your taxes, if it's coming out of your tax dollars, the increase in my taxes. So, I think that, as a council, we need to be very upfront and very honest with our taxpayers and not go do something, and then they go, "Hmm, why's my taxes going?" I've watched Marathon go rollover, or rollback, the past three years, and I wonder why Alamo Rata can't. But then we go and we buy all of this property on the taxpayer dime, and we settle the takings claim, and we act like we did a really great thing, but we spent a lot of money on the Glenn property. And that wasn't just because we wanted to go acquire a piece of property. That was because we settled the takings claim. So, I'm the bad guy. I don't mean to be the bad guy. I just don't want to see my taxes or your taxes go up, and then you fuss at me because your taxes went up. That's all. And I don't see anybody that's come in here from other places that tells me they're going to start paying our taxes. I don't see that. I don't see them coming in here and saying that they're going to pay our lawsuits. So, what I'm asking is, is we take a number that is acceptable to five people that sit up here, and we go to the state and say, "This is acceptable to us. We hope that we give them." But I'm telling you, the traffic is another issue. That is not our, when Marathon has 2,499 more transit uses south of us, when Key West is begging people to drive all the way down there to go do the Duval crawl, that's on us. And we don't want to expand that road going in downtown Alamo Rata. We want to keep our community the way it is. So, we just need to recognize that there's got to be other ways for us, as a community, to figure out how we can fix our internal transit problems while we're letting those people flush themselves down south. Because the people down south are not going to pay our taxes for us. So, what I'm saying is, get as many as we can. Bank them. Stop these takings claims so that our taxes go up, because some of us that pay taxes in this room and some of those that pay taxes, it's just like Harold said. The business owners don't get that Florida Save Our Homes exemption. They don't homestead their property. The people that rent to people that live and work down here that don't own but rent, what's going to happen to their rent? And we complain about the rent all the time. But the taxes go up, the rent goes up too, because they don't get the 3% Florida Save Our Homes either. So, it's not a bad thing. It's a logical thing, is all I'm saying. That's all.
Done?
And I'll shut up.
You sure?
Yeah, I think so. Maybe for now.
Yeah, okay. Steve, Buddy, Deb?
Go ahead. I'm hanging out. I want to see what everybody, I know what I'm going to say, but I'm going to wait until I hear some of you guys.
Well, I'll go ahead.
Okay. Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, I knew this was going to happen, where there was going to be a lot of information thrown about that's factual, misleading, what have you. And so, I wanted to keep my thoughts straight. And so, I prepared something to read, so I apologize for reading. But I think it's important to hear this. And really, it's just the four other people that need to hear this, but this is absolutely for the public too, because when we launched our campaign in August, we vowed to protect our waters and guard against overdevelopment. That is why I oppose this effort to more than double the building permits for Alamo Rata. Ask anyone in Alamo Rata. They will tell you that we are already overdeveloped, just like Sheriff Ramsey said when he was here in the last meeting about how our road is already overused. They will tell you that we've already poured too much concrete, already overstressed our waters, and already damaged our ecosystems. We've known this since 1992, when Monroe County adopted ROGO, Rate of Growth Ordinances, in response to the building boom during the 1980s. ROGO exists because the Florida Keys are designated as a county of critical environmental concern with natural resources that need to be protected and to ensure residents can evacuate within 24 hours in the event of a hurricane. The attempt to overturn the previous council's decision to request an additional 104.75 Building Permit Allocation System allocations, BPAS, for Alamo Rata by more than doubling the building permits to 250 endangers our waters and our quality of life. Since the last council meeting, I have asked our city manager and staff dozens of questions and reviewed hundreds of pages of documents and find absolutely no justification for sparking a construction boom in our village just because we can. 2025 is supposed to be the year that we finally update our comprehensive plan, after a quarter of a century, so that we can start planning our work and working our plan. I stand with this council's previous decision that was backed by Buddy Pinder and Sharon Mahoney, Mayor Mahoney, excuse me, for 104.75 building permits, and I reject this attempt to more than double them.
Deb?
Mike? Your mic's not on.
Your mic's not on.
That's what I meant by "mic."
I was going to say, "Mic's not here."
Mic's not here.
Mic's not here. Okay. Next, Mike. Okay, so, I'm in agreement with some of what Don says, maybe lots of what Don's saying, but it is about protecting our, it is about protecting our resources. It is. It is also about protecting our residents from unforeseen taxes. And that figure is impossible to quantify because of the fact that we don't know how many. Somebody says, "How many is there going to be? What's it going to cost?" Until you get there, you're not going to know. You have to speculate. And when you speculate, you always, at least when I do it in my business, expenses, you estimate high and income low, and then you pray for it to be the opposite. And you work for it to be the opposite. So, reasons that I think we need to increase that figure, and I put 250, but I'm negotiable on 250. Infrastructure. We've heard from our own engineers, we've heard from the utilities, all the utilities, that we can handle this, that there is no problem with the infrastructure. Is it aging? Does it need repair work? Of course it does. Everything has to have a timeframe where it gets updated, and should they have done things sooner than later? Probably. But the infrastructure is fine in what we have and what they say that we can handle. Environment. That's another big concern. We have regulations in place that will protect the environment. We currently have a percentage on clearing, on setbacks, on buffers, on mitigations for replacement of vegetation. We've putting storm, we're getting much more serious about the stormwater now that we've had the sewer in place for a while. We've been working on the canals, which is related to stormwater, but it's restoring the canals to where it should be. We're doing these, and we have the opportunity in the new comp plan to strengthen those if we don't think they're strong enough. If we can, I don't know, increase the buffers or whatever. There's lots of things that we can do to protect the environment even further. And we do need to protect our environment. That is what we survive on. And then we come to property rights or constitutional issues, whichever way you want to word this. This is a property rights state. If you own a piece of property, and you have, if you bought it under speculation, that may be a little different. But until those cases come forward, we won't know whether they can be won or lost. We don't know whether they'll even qualify to make a takings claim. And I use that word "takings" pretty openly, whether it's Burt Harris or some of the other forums. I use that as a broad term, okay? Just so people don't want to pick on me. "Oh, no, that's a Burt Harris case." Okay? It's a very broad term I use it as. If we state you can't use your property, and then there could be taking issues. There's arguments that can be made on both sides of the takings, whether or not we lose or win. And it is so true. It doesn't matter whether we lose or win. There's the expenses of the lawyers. It doesn't matter whether we lose or win. We're going to have expenses. Okay? And so, therefore, you know, to what extent? If we lose, we still may have to buy the property or do something for that homeowner. Do something. We have no allocations. We sure can't do it that way. So, the odds are, we have to buy the property. Is that an absolute? Is that an absolute no? Because we don't know the absolutes until we get there. But if we don't have, as Don was calling it, an insurance backup, a backup system, we have limited choices on how to resolve those cases. It's just so hard to speculate what that money will be, and I don't want that on my tax bill. That can be a very expensive tax bill, to be buying properties and/or paying the lawyers, probably both, for resolving cases. We don't know how many cases will come forward. Maybe everybody's happy exactly the way they are. Who knows? But we don't know this. On the list of properties, vacant properties, there was the Unification of Lots section. And we had slightly over 100, 103, I think it was, on that list. I also asked several questions. Those 100 lots, slightly over 100, were about $57 million worth of property. Now, not all of those will be taking cases. Not all of those will come forward as takings. Not all of those will want unity. And unity is up to the individual. If they don't want to unify their properties, you can't make them. It is a voluntary thing. It's a voluntary thing to do that. The county used $100,000 as enticement to get voluntary unification. I did very simple math. 100 times 100, that's $10 million. That's saying that everybody would take that unification. That's not going to happen. I know that. But at the same time, there's going to be people that goes, "No, I want an allocation. I want an allocation. I want to build on that property. I want to sell it. It's all mine now, but I want to sell that other property to my kids. I want them to build on it." You know, there's 100 possibilities of what it is. But if you took that $100,000, right there is $10 million. And is that tomorrow's figure? Is that going to be on our bill the very first year? Absolutely not. It would be spread over time, but it's still $10 million that has to come from somewhere. And if those cases ended up in court and we had to buy them, the opposite, well, not the opposite, it goes on to say that they're actually worth $57 million. If we had to buy them all, which we're not going to have to buy them all. We are not. It is not. I'm not trying to do. But it is out there. And who on that list, there's a few, not many, half a dozen, that are worth more than $1 million, who would take $100,000 for a $1 million piece of property? They get to use it, you're right. They still have use of it. But that's not a very good return on investment, unless you didn't plan on doing anything anyway. You're just taking the $100,000 so you can build a garage or a pool or something. But we have to have the money and something to get there. And if they don't want to do that, then what are we going to do? We have no allocations to give them? Talking about the Florida Forever program, there are about 24 properties on that list currently. It takes a willing seller. We have seen in the past, in front of this council, Florida Forever making offers, and the people say, "No, they don't accept that offer." Because Florida Forever has a limited amount of funds. If the village is willing to... It may be not saying the whole truth here, but if the willing is, if Florida Forever is willing to pay this amount and the village is willing to make up the difference between what the owner wants, it may be purchased. It could be purchasable. I'm not sure that that's even legal for us in our comp plan. But somewhere, if the owner is not willing to sell, you can't force him to sell. So you have three choices in that case. We either buy the property with the funds from the village. We give them an allocation, or we take them to court and we pay at least the attorney fees. Even if we win a takings case, we're going to pay the attorney fees. If you go through all the categories, I just picked two. They're all similar. You have choices in those categories of where you can settle it without putting money on a tax bill by having an allocation available. You can incentivize it, but you need money to do that. There's just many, many things that you need to do in order to preserve what we're doing. I also believe that we can spread out whatever the amounts that we get. And if you spread them out, and you're only giving out eight a year, that's... It sounds really nasty, but if you put eight more cars on the road this year, you're not going to see the difference. Eight plus eight plus eight plus eight. 20 years down the road, you'll see the difference. But each year, we improve in what we do and how we do things. The evacuation is true also. I really don't know what the magic number, about 24 hours, was. But I suspect they did something to come up and say, "Well, we need a day to clear the people. We need to allow them a whole day." A whole day is 24 hours. I personally think they could have very easily said, "Well, we need 20 hours." Or "We need 26 hours." Or "We need 28 hours." But they picked something that seemed in their mind as things that people would understand, which was 24 hours. If we change the evacuation, which I don't know whether the state would agree to any of this. This is going to be up to the state. Is two hours that much different in getting people out of here? It's just, you move up instead of 24 hours ahead of time, I'm going to tell you 26 hours that you need to leave. We need to get everybody out of here in 26 hours. Do we need to build them all? No. Do we need to allocate them into the right categories? Yes. I think some of these, however many we decide, need to be allocated into administrative relief. And that is a category that needs to be asked for by the state separately than the standard allocations. Because they are their own different, and I can't explain it all because I'm not the lawyers, but there's an ownership difference in administrative relief versus a standard allocation. So you can't take a standard and just say, "I'm going to put it into administrative relief." You have to have it or have the state assign it to that. Those administrative reliefs will help guard the court cases, the people that have checked off all the boxes, have been waiting in line. And we can create some new boxes to add in that line. But they've checked off all the boxes. They've been waiting. They've done everything that they were supposed to do. And now they're sitting there going, "Now what? You're going to tell me after all these years, I can't do anything?" So I'd like to negotiate this out and come up with a figure that protects us from a lot of money being put on our taxes and raising the tax bills, and yet also protects our environment.
Okay, Buddy? No, you go ahead. Go ahead.
All right, I'll be short and sweet, I promise. I got a couple of things to say that I have a major problem. Like, I'm going to say, Dr. Dalton said a lot of key things here. You know, I've been thinking about when my family came here and how, you know, they didn't stop other people. They weren't stopping others that wanted to come and live here. And you know, I don't really care if people laugh or whatever, but you know what? Platted lots were platted right up there in Randall Adams subdivision in 1927, okay? That meant they have a right to build. And I've got family members that have... My grandpa bought lots in the 50s. And you know what? They can't even... Our family members can't even get permits. Is that right? For the kids, the parents have died, the grandparents have died. But the kids and the grandkids and the great-grandkids can't even... They got a beautiful piece of property, but they can't get a permit. Is that fair? I don't think it's right. And I mean, people coming in our town and want to tell us, and like Don said, they're not going to pay our taxes when we have huge legal bills to pay, okay? And it is going to be a legal nightmare. I don't care what people say, all right? And Steve, I just want to talk to you for a minute. You brought up the nearshore water qualities. I don't know if everybody in this room knows that there is things... There is organizations out there right now. The Village actually has one hired called RES that's doing a feasibility study, and it's called Living Shorelines. All right? I know all about it. I've gone to these classes. I've gone to these mitigation bank things and conservation plays. It is huge what they're doing, okay? Smart growth. We can plan. I'll tell you what Don said. We can put stuff in our comp plan. Maybe it is 25, 30 years, 40 years, 50 years. We don't have to give all these things out, but you know what? It'd be better for us to have them than not have them, because it's an option. And I don't think it's fair that we have people that have constitutional rights, and they've owned a piece of property for 30 years, 40 years, and they can't even... It's been in the family that long, maybe 50 years, and they can't build on it. They can't get a permit. I know the feeling. I waited seven years for a permit when the Village first came into existence. You know, this is just not... It's not right. I'm not saying I want to see Alamo Rata. And people want to say, "Traffic?" Traffic goes to Key West. It goes to Marathon. It goes south here. It just happens it is our town. But, you know, there is constant conferences and new stuff, new technology of cities all over Florida that are actually becoming very proactive. And you know what? I think some of these people that are telling us that we can't do this, they ought to go to some of these towns and look what they're doing. You know, I went to the... Last year, got invited up to, when I was on my own time, up in Flagler County, and I went to the Northeast Florida Regional Planning Commission graduation. And I see where they took different things. They increased some of the density threefold, but they did workforce housing. They got it done. They came up with something. There's a way to get it done. But, you know, Mr. Raffinello talked about redevelopment. Well, we got people coming in here that want to redevelop marinas and do things and create workforce housing, but they can't because every... People come in here and say, "We can't do it." Or the people in Venetian Shores want to complain. But that marine has been there 60 years, and it got condemned because it was dilapidated. And you know what? The guy got tired of fighting. And there was workers in this community, he was giving it to local contractors. He's going to build a restaurant that was already there, rebuild it, make it nicer. He was starting an app that was going to have a boat go to wherever you live in the village and take you from Port Antigua or Tavernier Creek or where, take you to the restaurant and eat, so it's traffic off the road. But you know what? It got shot down. And he got tired. Him and his partner got tired and said, "Hey, forget it." They're selling the units, the hotel units or motel units, as TDRs. You know, and he was... This was going to be for locals. It was right there at Snake Creek. And I used to go there even when the place was pretty bad, okay? But they had good food. I don't know if they had drugs running through the place or what, but, okay? I remember when Mr. Kelly owned that, and they had dolphin tournaments out of there, and it was local people. And everybody knew everybody, and it was a good time. So I'm going to stop, but this thing with living shorelines and stuff, people... Look, the whole state's got... We got issues from where people... I just came out of a League of Cities meeting where they're talking about the herbicides. And then I said in another meeting somewhere else, but about the... It was actually in Georgetown, south of Willaca in Putnam County. It's called Mighty Rivers Recovery, the St. John's River, because of all the herbicides. Even our own state is spraying these invasives and spraying them with herbicides. And you've got St. John's River Keepers that's going out there and putting eel grass so it'll grow. They fence it and they put it in. But people, they're trying to work. They're trying to... They're doing something. It's a long process, but, you know, come on. I mean, we're in the future here. And what I'm thinking about more than anything is our future, the future generations. My grandsons, my great-grandkids, and yours. But you know what? I mean, this is a thankless position. Because I don't care what we do good up here. People want to come and say, "You can't do this. You can't do that." Hey, I'm a founding family member of Alamo Rata, and I don't care who'd like me to say that, but my family got a homestead here in 1883, in 1887, and the Russell family did too. My cousin Richie is still pulling traps, stone crab traps, crawfish traps. He's been doing it. Richie and I dove tropicals off of Chica. We used to go sell them to Mr. Nielsen, where the little liquor store is right there. I don't even know what the name of it is, by the library. And then we'd go down to Mr. Pete's and eat. But, you know what I'm saying? It's... I don't know, man. Alamo Rata is a very tight-knit community. And you know what? I say the saying is, "I got minors." People built all kinds of... Went in and built all kinds of stuff here, and now they don't have any more permits, but they want to try to hurt the people that are trying to get a permit. I think of one, Sharon, you know, Mr. Black, the young guy, Richard Black. You know, he's a fishing guide here. And he kept going on and on. He called me. His wife had called me. All these young people that want to live in our community and work in our community and hire employees in our community. But how can they even... How can they ever do something when we can't even give them a permit? They have the money to do it. They've saved their money. And they want to live here and raise their family here. And be... They want to contribute to society. So I know I get emotional. I'm going to shut up because I ain't going to say anymore, but you know what? We don't have... Even if we took these things, because if we don't take them, the county's going to get them. So they're going to go in the county. They're going to go in Monroe County, whether we want them to or not. They're going to go to the county, all right? So why not take them? Why not set something up that we can dish these out in a very smart-growth way? Where our kids and our grandkids and great-grandkids at least have a chance. And family members that are dying and leaving these to their grandkids and their great-grandkids who want to be here but never could afford to be here, but now they got a piece of property that without a permit would sell for $400,000. That's what some of these lots are selling for right now. $400,000 without a permit. So that's all I got to say.
Short and sweet.
Short and sweet.
Okay. I have a couple of questions I'd like just to ask, because for various reasons, I spent most of yesterday and last- I spent most of yesterday and last night on the phone with people in Tallahassee. And I had the ability to talk to several representatives in the Department of Commerce and other places. And I don't know, Monroe County is getting 220 allotments. That's it. Where the 250 has come from? Everybody up there is telling me there's no 250 being given out. So I don't know where this number has come from because I was told there isn't. Let me just finish. I know you're dying to jump in. But they also said that because Florida in general is being so overbuilt, that you can ask for permits at any time. There is no time limit on these permits. I don't know where this deadline of yesterday came, or tomorrow came from. And I'm getting this from people in Tallahassee who deal with this. So I'm confused because here again, we have misinformation. And everybody's jumping into this without really knowing the facts. And we can ask for more permits at any time. But what they're gonna give permits out in the future is gonna be when we present a plan. How are they gonna be used? Where are they gonna go to? Are they gonna be for workforce housing? Are they gonna be for renovation? They're not gonna just hand us permits without knowing a plan. That's, and I talked, like I said, several people yesterday and last night who said, "None of this is true." And that we can ask for more permits at any time. So where does this time crunch come from? I'm confused. And also, if we don't take them, let's just say there is 250. Marathon's not gonna get them, and neither is Key Largo, I was told. So I think we need to stop panicking and deal with the facts. And again, I think the people in Tallahassee pretty much better be on target since they're representing us and deal with this every day. So I'm tending, I'm believing what they had to say to me last night. And that the 250, we're not gonna get. So I don't know what everybody's talking about. We're gonna get 220 for all of Monroe County. We're supposed to get 40 out of that. Then it's up to us to present some type of plan on why we need more, where they're gonna go to, and how we're gonna use them. And then they'll be doled out according to plans and needs. So unless I'm missing something here, if somebody wants to correct me, I spent hours on the phone dealing with this yesterday, back and forth and last night. So tell me what you guys know different that these people aren't correct.
Be happy to address some of those questions for you, Madam Mayor. So I'm gonna start with the timeline first because I'm gonna go a little bit backwards. So the timeline comes from, it's, I think, a self-imposed timeline by Monroe County. They created back, let me back up, last October, when the Department of Commerce did their newest hurricane evacuation modeling and presented that to all the jurisdictions within Monroe County. The managers at the time, at that time, we had an interim manager, got together and reviewed it and decided that Monroe County would take the lead on any discussion regarding future BPAS allocations or ROGO allocations. So Monroe County took the lead and has created a timeline for the countywide discussion and the countywide decision-making process. Their decision-making process for any requests to Tallahassee is culminating this month. So they're, at their commission meeting, Board of County Commissioners meeting this month, that request is culminating this month. So it's a self-imposed deadline based on those factors. Do I think that we could potentially ask for Tallahassee for additional allocations at a later date, likely? But to go along with the county discussion, this was our self-imposed deadline. To get them our recommendation for what Alamo Rata needs so they could figure that into their conversation. So that's the, that's the timeline? Does that answer your question on that?
That answers one of them. But then, so I am sort of correct in what they told me last night, that this is just what Monroe County wants. There is no guarantee some, each area is getting 250. That is not true.
Well, there's, each area is not necessarily asking for 250.
Well, okay, so we are. So let's go back to the fact that we are sort of putting, again, the cart in front of the horse. Don't you think it would be smart, business-wise, to come up with a plan on how they're gonna be used, where they're gonna be used, what our actual needs are? I'm listening to everybody here tonight talk about merging lots, Florida Forever and everything. We have spent zero amount of time really formulating what would work, what we have and what we need. It seems like, just take them, just take them. I don't agree with that. I just don't. I think it'd be smart for us to get a plan first, figure out what we have. We can always ask the state of Florida for more. We, and I also was told last night that they're not gonna give us any more because we already have some in the bank. He said to me last night, "It's like having a bag of Halloween candy. We still have candy in the bag. They're not gonna give us any more candy till these candies are gone." That's what I was told, per word, last night from somebody in the Commerce Department. And again, I'm just saying that I think we are like jumping into something, like there's some ticking time bomb, without thinking the smart way to manage what we need. And that is just my opinion. I agree with Steve in a lot of ways that we are ripping apart what the last council did without coming up with a plan. It just, because we're gonna do it, but let's, let's do this smart. Let's have a plan. That's my opinion. Because we can always ask for more, so.
So, Ms. Mayor, I'd like to ask Jennifer a question.
Mike?
I talked to DEO myself, all right? I know Ms. Meredith Ivey, Barbara Powell, you know, the people up there. And I asked her about, because there's some, people made some statements about our town and about the density of our town. I was told that Alamo Rata was the most rural town in the Florida Keys. We had more green space. And I told them that I remember most of the green space in Alamo Rata, but she said, "Well, the village has even more now." We do. We do. We absolutely do. And then I think about, you know, I hear all these stories, and I think about Mr. Arnie Bellini that started Live Wildly with the Florida Wildlife Quarter. He's contributed $42 million to buying land for the animals in Florida. You know what? I personally talked to him, and he says, "I gotta tell you a story, Mayor Pender." When I was at an event that he was at, that he sponsored, and I forget how much money he gave out of that event. He said, "I want to tell you where this all came from." He said, "I came to Alamo Rata and spent a couple of weeks. I got on my bicycle and I rode around. I went to the state parks, to Lingavide, Indian Key, all the, you know, different parks that were, and the man said, you know, he said, "I looked at all the green space that Alamo Rata had." And he said, "Hmm." He said, "I thought about this." And he says, "If Alamo Rata, little town of Alamo Rata, 6,000 people can do this, what an example." And he started Live Wildly, and now the man has contributed over $40 million to the Wildlife Quarter, helping buying property and protecting the wildlife in our state. And it's why so many people want to come here, for the experience. Why they come here? Where the fishing capital of the world? Where, you know, for the panther, for the bobcat, for, and it's protecting them. But, and now they're trying to get with some of the homeowner or the property owners to where they can try, they can tie this river to sea loop, or you guys have probably heard where they're taking the old railroad tracks and they, it's called Rails to Trails, where you can go ride for 250 miles. But, but it's, and if you ever had the opportunity to see the movie that they did, O2O, it's amazing. It's totally amazing. And that's why people want to come here, that we're for fishing, for viewing, whether it's the manatees or the crocodiles or alligators. But you know, I find it interesting that here's a man that was, made his money, and I believe in the IT business, and he took, and now he's launched this whole thing, who I believe they were just here in Lingavide in October, because he does so many great things everywhere in the state of Florida. And you know, it's all about the wildlife and the experiences and stuff. So, you know, but when I called Tallahassee and I asked questions, it's, you know, that we're one of the most rural. They said, "Now, Key West is a whole different story." That's what I was told. But you know, and most everybody I talk to Tallahassee loves coming to Alamo Rata. The majority of them, I mean, I talked to a senator last week, a new senator that's from Marion County, and you know, he's, they come here and stay in Alamo Rata. Some of them stay all summer. He's got him and his friends and, I don't know, I must be missing, but everybody, all the different people, when I went up there for Florida Keys days, I didn't go to, you know, I saw Jim Mooney and Anna Maria. But you know, I went, I went and saw the Speaker of the House, Paul Renner, okay? The pro temp speaker, Chuck Clemens. Every one of them had something special to say about Alamo Rata and how much they love Alamo Rata. And I know people are sitting there thinking, "Well, what has this got to do with?" I don't know how many permits they want to give us, but I'm just saying, Sharon, if it's, if the number's 100, if it's 200, if it's whatever, I don't know. But I know they are very workable. And, but Jennifer, can you help me understand where we got this number from that?
The 250? The 250? So that was, if you remember originally, back when we had the original presentation back in October under the previous council, that number was derived from the number of vacant parcels on the vacant parcel list plus the 54 on the queue for the BPAS list, which brought you to 232. And then I put in 18 for like a cushion to cover us for any human error.
So that's building on every vacant lot, basically, to come to 250.
And that was before analysis of whether those were even buildable lots or not?
And again, we're getting a new comp plan. We're getting all this stuff. Don't you think we should do our due diligence and figure things out and see what's on the Florida? I know you guys are chomping at the bit, just let me finish. I just think that we're over, I don't know, I just think it's sort of silly that if we can get permits at any time and ask for them and show a plan, we're A, more likely to get them, and B, it shows that we are thinking about our growth down here. Just to grab them and bank them and sit on them, to me, is sort of like, I don't know, it just doesn't make any sense to me, and I'm sorry, so. Go ahead.
Thanks. All right. So, I mean, we are a divided community. We've always been a divided community, but we usually do it with respect. And the emails that came back, somebody mentioned those at the podium. And I think there was 26 people that wrote in and said they supported us getting more. And I think there were 24 that said they didn't support. That shows the division.
I don't agree with those numbers.
What's that?
I don't, I didn't find that to...
What did you count?
Not 26 and 24.
What, did you count? Because that's what I counted. So I mean, you're more than welcome to, they're here in front of you.
I'll give that to you later.
Help yourself. But that's what I counted. And what did you count, Sharon?
I didn't count, but continue what you're saying, so we can...
So there was also a comment that was made about Florida Forever being on the list and those are unbuildable. Just because you're on the Florida Forever list does not make your property unbuildable. You can still sell it, you still build one. It just means that it's available for, or somebody has listed it on the Forever, if Florida Forever wants, if it's able to be purchased, that it is a possible conservation pieces of property. The 24-hour timeline was made in the 80s. We've got huge technology since then. They're very accurate in judging where a hurricane is gonna be. And they're even very accurate at seeing this quick intensification on these hurricanes now. So for technology that we had in the 80s, when we didn't even have these, to compare the technology then or how they came up with some models when we didn't have these, is kind of silly. Things have expanded our knowledge, our abilities to track, to understand. You know, I, we do, I think we do need to kind of have, in order to properly develop a comprehensive plan and how we're gonna issue permits, however they are. And I'm gonna go back to saying, it is, needs to be a community thing. We could give extra points for people that build houses that are less than 2,000 square feet. We can give extra points for people that promise that they're gonna homestead their property for five years. And we can require people that want to build these mega mansions to go through a conditional use process so that we can make sure that they've got more parking or they pay more on their sewers assessments. There are so many things, but we don't, we don't know. Well, we don't know, and we've got to start with something. And you're right, we could ask Tallahassee all day long that we, what we would like to have. But there's, and there's no guarantee they're gonna give them to us. But if we don't have them and people start giving us these takings claims, we're gonna be in trouble. We're gonna be in trouble. And it's the taxpayers that are gonna pay. So I'm okay with us taking them and saying, what is a number that everybody could kind of agree on? And putting them and saying, "We cannot touch them, use them, or think about touching them until our comprehensive plan is written and we voted on the comprehensive plan and we know."
But there's no them.
But if the number needs to come...
There's no them. There is no 250. That is what we're gonna ask for.
Okay. So then why are we asked by the county to come up with a number? Why is Marathon struggling with the same thing that we're struggling with tonight, to come up with a number to give to the county for the county to do that?
Maybe it should be a number that is reasonable and makes sense and not just reaching for something that, to build on every lot? I don't agree with, I'm sorry, I just don't.
But you see, that's the hope that we don't have to. The hope is...
Listen, I'm standing by what I had to say. And what I'm saying is, we should come up with a plan. We should be smart about this. We should take what the council ahead of us already suggested and then do our homework.
Do you know that the majority of people, actually, all of the people I spoke to had no idea that the previous council had approved one permit per quarter for the next 12 years? No one knew that.
Well, I know a lot of people who know that. And even in Tallahassee, they said, "That's ridiculous. You need to do at least two or three in that way."
But that's what you all approved.
I, I'm, let me finish. If we did two or three and then we lower what we already have, because they're not gonna give us anything until we're done. I was told that several times last night. So maybe instead of talking to the people in town and stuff, we should do our homework a little better and talk to the experts.
I did talk to that person. I did too. I talked to that person.
I talked to that person too.
I don't think so. That person's not from here. I don't know who you're talking about.
Okay. Well, I talked to a person that told me what I was hearing you said.
Okay.
So maybe it's a different person. But he has the same story.
Okay.
And, and actually, the 200 and, well, first of all, the timeline was a self-imposed timeline because we wanted to partner with the county. And you know, it's always true, you do better in strength in numbers. We don't have the staff, no offense to our staff, but we don't have the staff to put the right paperwork together to come back two years from now and ask for whatever that number is that we think we want.
What do you mean you don't have the right staff?
No, I don't, no, not, we don't have enough staff. We don't have...
She's looking at you strange still.
She's got one person, her, okay?
I don't think that's...
It takes, well, okay. I, I think the strength in numbers with the county, I've seen this in other subjects. We just do much better in, in strength in numbers. And if we're all on the same page, we don't have to be exactly on the same page. We can bank ours, but we need, we need to be unified. Now, you talk about Marathon making that decision. You want to hear something that I think is kind of crazy. They're talking about 1,000 units. Thousand...
He's saying no.
Well, the last report I saw was, well, I didn't see what actually went to council tonight, so.
I know.
We might not get any. You're right. We might not even get the 220 for the county. That's not a guarantee.
No, it's not.
But if, if the county can get to... But if, if the county can get 200, we've, or 220, we've been promised kind of 40 out of that. The others, which would be over and above the 220 and the, the 250 that we're talking, you take 40 off that, so now we're talking 220, 210, I can't do the math tonight. If you, those, anything over and above the 220 at the county level is going to take legislative change. That's not going to happen overnight. I would expect it to be a, probably a couple-year process. Maybe longer. But if you don't think about it ahead of time, and I was told that we had 26 allocations, I even called Jennifer late in the day and said, where'd 26 allocations come from? The only thing that I can come up with, that we have 26 allocations that we have not used is three of them that we've carried over and, is all three of them in 25 or is one of them in 25 and two in 26?
The other way around.
Okay.
Two in 25 and one in 26.
Okay. So we have those three. And then we have 23 administrative reliefs that we have, they, those are earmarked for litigation. You can't just pass those out. They're earmarked for litigation. So, I actually sat down and thought about, let's see, how many years would I want to spread them out? It's not a tonight discussion because that's, we need to give a flat figure to the county, but I did think about that. Huh?
We've already given a figure.
We need, we're, we're not, we're discussing whether we're going to give a different figure. Forgive me.
Please continue.
Thank you. We need to make that discussion, and it wasn't about how many in this category and how many in that category and how many years, because that is part of the comprehensive plan. It was, what do we think that we need to get there? But in order, in my mind, to get there, I did that exercise, at least in my mind, of what, what I would like to do. So, I think that with all of this, that we, we, you're right, we do need a plan. But if we're going to partner, we, we don't have time to do a detailed plan, because if we go up there by ourselves, I've been up there by myself, Alamo Rata, by ourselves, it's very hard to get a lot done. You need the, the strength in numbers. We are a rural town. We're considered a rural town. Nobody really wants to change any of that. I don't think we're going to have any big construction boom, and it's not based off of residential. If we do, it would be others. It would be commercial if we have it. So, I guess, what did I forget?
Hey, why Deb's trying to think about that? Can I ask Jennifer a question?
Help yourself.
Jennifer, what do you recommend here? What, what do you, can you give us a little bit of wisdom here?
I mean, my recommendation from October is still my recommendation. I mean, the previous council voted on something else. I had no issue with that vote as well, so, you know, if, if you're struggling with what to do, I, I guess I would say, you know, there's no harm in keeping the previous vote the way it was. To Mayor Mahoney's point, you know, we can always revisit this conversation after we finish the comp plan amendment update and any other, you know, we are, the department is going to be working on administrative relief plan and affordable housing plan and all different plans that the council has tasked us with doing. So, when we finish all of those, if the council wants us to revisit some of this conversation, we can have further conversations with Tallahassee. We're happy to do that as well. So, you know, my recommendation from a professional point of view still stands at 250, but if, I'm fine with the 104.25 that the council recommended, or voted on in October, and, you know, if we wanted to just keep that vote intact, I'm happy to move on with that as well.
And Jennifer, that 105 also included a buffer, did it not?
I wasn't 100% clear on the math on how they came up with the 104.25. So Mark came up, Councilman Gregg came up with that number, so it was a little confusing to me, but, sure.
Well, if, if it's confusing to you, then it's not surprising that it's confusing to all of us. I think that, I think that the 250 is, is a great number, if, if I were the planning director, to make sure that all bases are, are covered, right? But it's, to me, not an accurate analysis for us to have information, to be provided with that information, to make sound policy decisions. So, I haven't received any sort of analysis from, from legal of whether they recommend it, and I would think that if legal would have any sort of hesitation on takings or lawsuits, that, that they would have informed us of that. I think, and I am not a lawyer, that if we have 250 and we don't give them out, I think that invites more lawsuits. If I build, if I have a property and I know that, that you have the permits and you're not going to give it to me, I'm going to sue. As far as I understand, anybody that's bought property prior to 1993, which are only 79 parcels out of about 275, they, we don't know if some of those are in the queue or, or if they're not, or if they're joined to another parcel that are already deemed unbuildable. I, I also think that we, we, I think that the takings claims, lawsuits, as was presented very well by your colleague, Ms. Gonzalez, that 99.9% of anything that she's come across has basically gone away. Anybody that's bought property after 1992 or 93 went into that knowing that there is no guarantee that they're going to get a permit. And so that's, I think, one of the reasons why a lot of people think that those takings cases aren't going to be as so, as serious as some up here might think they might be. So I don't feel comfortable making policy without accurate, deep analysis on these numbers. And all I keep hearing is, there's no magic number, we don't know. So how are we supposed to give good policy?
I just, I just want to clarify that our analysis is accurate, so unless you can show me where it's not accurate.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to imply inaccurate. I meant not totally, fully realized in terms of all of the nuance that we're talking about, buildable, not buildable, timeframe when they were purchased.
Well, all, all the lots on the list are buildable.
They are all buildable.
There's more.
And, and, and to add to that, the, the planning staff is the one that would give us direction on that. And, and Ms. Gonzalez's presentation didn't necessarily say that how many of those were settled out of court. So they, they weren't, they weren't all the way through the court system, but just like I just got through telling you of five others that never actually made it all the way through court. They were settled out of court. They costed the village a lot of money.
And, and the Sojourn case is one of those that you're referring to?
Sojourn case was one of those.
Yeah, and that, that wasn't even related to B pass. That was a, that was a zoning situation.
Oh, so why is it that they got two free B passes and then on top of that, they got four extra points on the other four? So they were able to create six lots and then get four B passes, actually six P passes.
Right.
So you think that that didn't cost the village?
I, I don't think it cost the village in the way that you're implying it does, same thing with B pass.
There was no way that I was implying anything other than, there's a cost to the village. There's a cost to the taxpayers. And they won their lawsuit. So to simply sit here and say, these people are not going to win their lawsuits, is just not factual, because Sojourn won, Seabreeze won, the other ones that, that I mentioned won.
Yeah, that was carefree, Dave. The corporation was carefree that came against the village.
And Seannick won.
And they won.
Yeah. So, I mean, so again, what brought this up was the recommendation from our planning director, who went through and did an analysis, it's a correct analysis, and no, if we have the numbers, they're not going to sue us, because we didn't get sued once for not issuing a permit when we were following our guidelines under Rogo and under B pass. At Rogo, going into effect on June 10th of 1992, I was there the day we issued the first Rogo permit. I was the building official of the county and came here and did the same thing in the village after we got through doing the moratorium. So I've seen them happen. And we didn't get sued because, because we followed our guidelines. And we had those in the bank. And we stuck to our guns and we issued the number of permits that we said that we were going to issue, even after we incorporated. We took the average number that we had always issued in Alamo Rata and we grabbed those from the county. The county took those and we're issuing the upper keys and Alamo got its number and we, we stuck to our guns. We said we were going to issue whatever it was, 26 permits a year, and we stuck to our guns and we went all the way through, and we did not get a lawsuit because we said, you, you're not following the Rogo guidelines, B pass guidelines. So.
Okay, so what are we going to do?
I, I think the idea of getting 250 permits and saying that we don't have to use them all, I, I think is, that's, a builder's going to build, a fisherman's going to fish, right?
But they can't build if it's in our law. So how about we do this? How about we find a middle ground? And we, and we agree that we set them aside in some legal form of a moratorium, that we cannot use them until our comprehensive plan is completely adopted and this village gets to weigh in, the citizens. Not people from Big Pine Key or Sugarloaf or Summerlin or Key Largo, who's not going to be affected by this, but we, as the citizens of Alamo Rata, get to work hard and diligent on our comprehensive. You know, I remember when the hoteliers and the realtors and the rental agents and, and the citizens all came together and wrote a very good, doable, viable vacation rental ordinance. And, and, and it is working. And Alamo Rata is busting people left and right that are doing it illegally, and people are going to do it illegally. You know, people fish out of season, they take lobster out of season. They do all of these things that they're going to do illegally, but they get caught, and the same thing is going to happen with the, the vacation rental stuff. But, but the community came together and they wrote a very good, viable plan, and I think the same thing, I know the same thing is going to happen because we care about our community, that we're going to write a very good, doable, comprehensive plan. We've got a young man that's not going to give us cookie cutter, something safe that's going to go through the state. We've got a, a young man that's going to do something that's very good for this community with our community involvement. And I have faith in this community. And, and I have faith in the, the councils that come behind us, because it's going to be embodied in our comp plan. So I, I guess, I, I'm, you know, it's, I'm not falling on the sword for something, but I'm saying that the, so many people I talked to had no idea that it was one permit per quarter and, and we're, you know, we're, we're really not stuck with that. We're still in the middle of a moratorium. We're not issuing any permits right now. I hope Thursday that we can come to some agreement on folks that have been stuck in limbo for so long, because that's not right to do this to the community. So I'll make a motion that we go for 200 permits if that's the number that this, that, that we can throw out there to the state and, and, and just say, I don't want to use them. I want them to be in our comp plan and I want us to use them smart. So I make a motion that we change that 104 point, whatever it was, to 200 allocations if we can get them from the state.
I stand by 105. That more than covers the buildable lots.
He made a motion, he made a motion, so let's.
To continue the conversation.
It's a different motion than the resolution.
Okay, stop, please. He made a motion, is there a second? If there's not a.
A second.
Okay, now that, so.
So now we got a second.
It's okay, so we have a second. Do we want to call the roll or do you want, okay?
But I do want to make a comment about the second. We do have that, that piecemeal and I would like to figure out whether that's 200 and point.
25.
25 or whether it's.
I rely on Jennifer.
199.75 or whatever, just so we can round it off and make that utilize, but 200.
Yeah, we're coming up with arbitrary numbers again.
Okay, Marnie.
No, well, I can, I can talk to.
Is there a point?
Yeah, so we have .75, so.
So we need the point.
Do you want 199.25?
Yeah, that's fine. 199.25.
Marnie, will you call the roll, please?
Good, but before you, just to be clear, that's okay with the second?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, I was, was trying to suggest that, so. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor, Don Horton.
Yes.
Councilmember Deb Gillis?
Yes.
Councilmember Steve Friedman?
I stand against overdevelopment and I do not want to more than double the amount of potential permits given. My vote is no.
Councilmember Buddy Benfiker?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor, excuse me, Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
No.
If that motion passes three to two.
Okay, I guess we move on to Tab 11.
Yes, Tab 11 is in the motion section. I know that Marnie had passed out a, an updated Tab 11, should have been on your seats because we, we just got word as to when Florida Keys Day would be. Tab 11 is, would be a motion to approve the 2025 regular and land use council meeting calendar. And again, these, these dates are set by resolution and they reflect the, the directives under the resolution.
Okay, so I don't think there's any public comment. This is for us or is this just public?
Yeah, there's no public comment, this is just scheduling.
Okay, all right. So, do you guys want to take some time and, and look at the calendar or do, and bring it back on Thursday, or do we want to make a decision now?
Yeah, I like your idea, Sharon. We can do this on Thursday.
Well, I, I had, except for the fact that they've added Keys Days in, I had already decided on dates, but I don't care.
Are you comfortable with it? Do you have dates?
No. Trying to run, I haven't even looked at this.
Yeah, at me, yeah. Yeah, Don, I, I got to look at my schedule.
When's the Florida Keys Days?
It's in March, isn't it?
March 13.
March what?
So you, realistically, you'd fly up on the 12th, because they have an opening reception on the 12th and then the 13th would be the day. And then you'd need to fly back the evening of the 13th or the morning of the 14th, depending on the schedule and flight schedules.
I don't know, I don't like it, but it's way in March.
Oh, is it March?
Because this year.
No, it's in January last year.
So they, they alternate, it depends on, based on election, so some years the session is earlier in the year and some years the session is later in the year. This happens to be one that is later in the year.
So everybody look at your sheet and we'll do it at the start of the meeting on Thursday, give you the dates. And anything else?
Okay, I have one question on that. Did you say that because of the way that the scheduling is, they fly, you fly on the 12th to get to meetings on the 13th?
Well, you wouldn't have to, but if you want to be at the opening reception on the 12th, you would need to fly up on the 12th. But, I mean, it's, it's obviously.
The opening session is on the 12th.
The opening reception. They, they have a reception for, for everyone to kick off Keys Days. Your elected officials will be there, the other, from the state as well as other elected officials.
So it starts on the 12th?
Yeah, so technically it starts the evening of the 12th, but the, the day itself is the 13th.
You would need the travel time regardless. You would need the travel time regardless to get to that.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I mean, realistically, you would need to fly up on the 12th unless there's like a 3:00 AM flight and you're an early riser, and I don't think there's that early of a flight.
Okay.
And I have.
I didn't think you'd want to talk to us about when our meetings are, but if you want to, I mean.
Well, if, if you're deferring it, I would encourage you to do public comment then. I mean, it's up to you when you want to do it, but if, if you're not going to consider it now, I just.
Are you coming Thursday? You can do it Thursday.
You have something to think about.
Okay, okay.
On the new, on the new schedule, it talks about November the 11th being Veterans Day. On the old schedule, we needed to move that, but now it looks like that we don't, that you've already not scheduled the meeting for the 11th or that's still, we still need to move that.
Yeah, that's open to you, or if you want, you can combine them both into, onto the 13th, or you can move the 11th to another day. I mean, it's really at the pleasure of the council because just, there's a couple of, you know, quirks, based on the current schedule, but, you know, it's, it's up to you all, how you want to handle it.
Okay, well, then I'll...
Are you going to take the...
Are we, no, we, weren't you paying attention?
No, I wasn't.
It's Thursday, okay, so meetings adjourned.
At least I'm honest.
Jennifer, do, do we really, are we, do we...